All right, at 6:00 PM, so we get the call meeting to order, start with flag salute and invocation by Diana.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, thank you today for this day you gave us, Lord. Thank you for the rain you received. Thank you for the cooler temperatures we have, Lord. As you give this meeting tonight, help us to, all the decisions that are made be made for the betterment of the community and of the town. Will it help us to live for you and just thank you for this community that we live in, in your name I pray.
All right, item number six, the consent agenda. Any questions on that? If not, entertain a motion. Consent agenda.
I only have one comment on page fifteen of the consent agenda. It states that you bought one hundred and twenty thousand gallons of unleaded gas on September twentieth at the fuel island, which I hope is mistaken.
I would have to check the invoice to see if it's a typo.
I don't have that in front of me.
And what was the price on it, Pete? What was the price on the one hundred and nine thousand gallons? Your mic's not on. We can't hear you.
Mark turned it off. What it is is an obvious mistake, but it was just a duplication of the same charge that started on day one. And they bought six thousand gallons or so, or eight thousand gallons thirteen times on the same day.
No, that's not what happened.
Well, I'm sure that wasn't what happened, but it's what it shows on the page.
No, what it is is if you look at the left-hand side of that, it's, the description is one time. And then when-
What page are you on, Susan?
Page fifteen. When you look at the account codes, which is in the column just to the left of the description, it shows you every time that there's a different account code change. So the description's never going to change, but the account code changes. So it really was just seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-one gallons of unleaded gas and then a thousand forty-three of cleared diesel for the fuel island.
Just broken down to thirteen different.
It's just broken down into thirteen or however many different account codes.
And that was in a two-week period?
One day.
It was, we just made a purchase to put in our tanks. Yeah.
Any other questions?
The only other thing I had, and I spoke briefly with the city manager about it beforehand, was he was going to visit about the attorney's extra billing there. I don't know, is that was-
Do you know what page we're on?
Just the, it's actually, it's got its own separate thing. It'd be on E, item E. There was an additional twenty-nine hundred and-
Yeah, that's outside his normal contract because it is a, it's a, either a grant or a lot of times if we do bonds or anything like that, that'll be a fee that he charges because it's not outside the normal course of the business.
Will that be, will there be help to pay that from the grant? If it's for the grant?
No, there will not be.
That won't be included in the grant?
No. We could do an insurance claim because that's what it is. It's-
I think we should probably do an insurance claim if that's, yeah, I mean if that's truly what it is. If there was a mix-up or something like that.
Well, the reason why we're having to have legal get involved is because there's a contract dispute. And so because the contract is with the city of Fort Scott, we had to have our legal advisor involved.
Well, I mean, I guess we could go under the advisement of staff, but if it's a three thousand dollar, you know, extra, I mean, I think it's probably worth-
I know there's no grant dollars for it, so we'd have to do an insurance claim.
Okay. Well, do you think that's wise to do?
I think we could, we could counter with Mr. May Kemper's insurance because it's really, the contract has to be done through the city, but yet it's, it's, there's, there should be no expense to the city.
Sure.
So yes, we could.
Yeah, if you could, if you could start that conversation to see, I mean, that's three thousand dollars. That doesn't seem like a lot, but that's, that's a lot. And the other thing, I got my question answered earlier, was a request to pay Southeast Kansas Regional Planning Commission three thousand dollars for the ladder truck grant. I didn't know what that was, but that was, they helped us write that grant. So, or they did write that grant.
They did write that grant.
So it's really cheap compared to, you know, for a two million dollar adventure or whatever it was. For three thousand dollars, a typical grant writing gets three percent.
I think it was, I think the total payout to them was about ten thousand.
Which still, three percent of two million would be a lot more than ten thousand.
And on a CDBG grant, there's a lot of paperwork, a lot of hearings that have to be done. So they, they really kind of helped us with all that administration to make sure that we're doing everything correctly.
I have no more questions.
All right, entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Randy Nichols?
Yes.
Pete Allen?
No.
Kevin Allen?
Yes.
Josh Jensen?
Yes. Engineering firm update. Let's see any of them here.
Mayor, Jason called me and he's on his way.
Okay, we'll move it.
Yes.
All right. Public comments. Tim Van Hokey?
Van Hokey.
Van Hokey.
Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, city commissioners, for the opportunity to come here and speak. I've got a lot of content. I'm really going to try and keep it within the five minutes. But I would ask if I run over a little bit, please bear with me, especially if there are questions from you. The first thing I would like to say is that my name is Tim Van Hokey. I live at eight oh two South Hill Street. Before I address the commission, I would like to first start by taking a brief moment to recognize the loss of Marsha Lancaster. I got to know Marsha during the time we'd lived here and she loved and gave of herself to our community and was a true local icon. And may God be with Marsha and her family and friends.
Second that.
Okay, so being relatively new, four years here in town, I understand that to live in a small city may create situations that do not exist in larger cities. It's very difficult for an individual in a small town or a government entity such as our city commission to avoid doing business with the city, county, someone they know or related to, or own property or businesses together, such as some of our commissioners and other people do. With that said, we should be extremely cautious and accountable about ensuring that all guidelines are followed to the letter of our city or county policies and guidelines and state statutes, as well as following the appearance of best ethical practices. So the subject I'd like to review tonight is from the September seventh meeting. It's the Third Street Manhole Project. I attended part portion of that meeting and watched the remainder at home. I thought Commissioner Nichols and Commissioner Watts brought forth points of high concern regarding an invoice for an emergency backfill expenditure that took place during the completion. I agree with Commissioner Nichols that policy or procedure by the city manager or from whoever does not appear to have been followed, even when I tried to look at it from the perspective of each person involved. I also made some core requests since this meeting and I have concerns about what I found, but I'll get to those in a minute. The first thing that surprised me, and I think it's great if this is a policy down here, is that a city commissioner actually stopped a project, whether it was an emergency project, a contracted project, a maintenance project. And by, in this case, I'm not contesting it because obviously we had the wrong backfill that was going to be used. So that, that could have saved us a problem. However, what took place after this change is what is in question. There was a very lengthy discussion that came out of this. And again, Commissioner Pete Allen aptly and correctly identified the problem. Yet what surprised me during the entire commission meeting discussion is that he remained absolutely silent, nor did he vocally agree that this was an emergency. So for clarification on what constitutes an emergency for the city of Fort Scott, Dr. Nichols hit it pretty much on the head. I'm not going to go into that again. But it also states that during most emergencies that the department head and the city manager are involved in that decision. During the discussion I didn't hear were either Mr. Mix from the water department or the public works director were involved in the decision. Then it was just the city manager. I also did not hear that the city engineer had told Jeremy that he was recommending that any emergency be declared to get backfill material. I state this because the city engineers, outside engineers and the entire commission were contacted and convened regarding the Eagle Blot Building. The mayor stated that Jeremy Frazier, the former city manager, had gotten three bids for the work and repeated this several times, as well as the fact that it was Jeremy that declared the backfill an emergency. The continual justification provided was that our city manager, with degrees in communications and public administration, was declaring this backfill emergency on his own unbearable responsibility. Twice it was brought to the attention that there was free backfill clay available from the county during this meeting by Commissioner Watson Nichols. I myself had actually been told by the former community development director that she had located free county clay well before this took place. Mayor Jones stated that he thought Commissioner Watson Nichols were nitpicking the clay purchase and comparing it to the Riddell bid in the invoice. The only difference being here is that for the Riddell invoice cost overruns, all of the commissioners were in the room and had input. And then I was surprised at the three hours and forty-six minute mark of reference that was made saying that this is no different to offering tax breaks to certain businesses of commissioners. There are other things that commissioners have done. I'm not sure where that came from. I'm not sure if it was meant as an accusation or intimidation. Or worse yet, does it suggest that other questionable decisions had taken place in favor of other current commissioners or previous commissions? Finally, the mayor addressed Earl's Engineering to find out if the backfill was in fact an emergency and clarification of this was asked for by Commissioner Nichols. Earl's Engineering represented and stated words the effect that he could not say that the backfill itself was an emergency. However, from a financial perspective, that could be agreed upon and that is actually in our city purchasing. So a motion was made by the mayor to approve the payment of bill. It was seconded by Commissioner Allen, Pete Allen, who other than seconding the motion and voting yes, remained silent for the entire discussion. So what I have here through my core request was the first item I have here is purchase order four three one oh five from the city to Riddell dated five ten twenty-one. On this PO, it clearly states emergency repair and replacement and then it's signed by Susan Bancroft. I also have the invoices here from Riddell and from Skitches Hauling and Excavating. The Riddell ones were dated six twenty-eight to seven twenty-nine and seven twenty-one to seven twenty-three for Skitches Hauling and Excavating. What I could not get, oh, sorry. Finally, I have the city purchase order four nine seven six six to Skitches Excavating and Hauling dated seven twenty-one. This one's signed by Jeremy Frazier. What's missing here is any reference to, or the word emergency is that existed on the initial emergency repair order. What I could not get from the core request was a copy of the three bids that the mayor had said that Jeremy went out for and received. In fact, when I followed up on my core request at City Hall, I was told that even the mayor had been asked about them and had not seen them. I do, I do have what appears to be one estimate dated seven fifteen from Skitches Hauling and Excavating. Right here, two different options, whether we use his trucks or his. Six days prior to the emergency backfill work being done and completed. So I agree that on May tenth, there was an emergency situation at Third Street. But to say on July twenty-first, almost two and a half months later, we now have an emergency backfill requirement, that's, that's a little hard. So I did, I dug deeper. I mean, I like to investigate stuff. And I looked at the city purchasing policies and they're very long, page fifteen twenty-six of the manual. And going through this, in almost all cases, even for emergency orders, there is a requirement that either the commission ratifies it or that it's addressed at the next city commission. On these dates, there were meetings on July sixteenth, nineteenth, twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third, August third, August fifth, August tenth, and August seventeenth. So why was this not on any of those agendas and submitted at these meetings post the date of the first quote for emergency backfill material? The invoice to Skitches Hauling and Excavating was for work done on seven twenty-one, seven twenty-two, and seven twenty-three. Material was hauled on city trucks. Now, seven twenty-one to seven twenty-three was a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. I did check with the county and they were not closed on those three days to possibly access the free county clay. Since we use city trucks to haul the material, this cost to taxpayers for material should have been zero. So I guess my question is, if a city commissioner can stop an emergency project due to something as backfill, can't the city manager, mayor, or another commissioner question and stop a purchase order that is to the benefit of another commissioner to save the taxpayers money and get free clay from the county? Especially since it was Fort Scott city trucks and fuel that was used. The outcome may have been different possibly if the other two commissioners had not been excluded. The conversation on nine seven that I watched several times contained many attempts, I thought, in my opinion, to blur the lines between the written policy of the city, county, state, as well as potential concerns. I believe two of the commissioners did their best to address the concerns of the citizens of our town. I have attended these meetings and have persuaded the way that everyone can comment. You know, I've heard several people, Mr. Hoyt, Mr. Farmer. Well, one thing that concerned me was during this entire twenty-minute exchange that contained actual words or suggested content such as ethics, legality, crossing the line, Kansas statutes, city ordinances, policy guidelines, the city attorney had nothing to contribute, and by the way, I hope he does get better and feels well, to contribute, nor was any counsel provided to commissioners on the discussion at hand. He remained absolutely silent, as did Commissioner Allen, until he seconded the motion and voted yes to approve the payment of the bill for fifty-one hundred dollars to Skitches Hauling and Excavating. So unless I've missed something, an emergency project was stopped by a city commissioner. The city manager told the mayor he was getting three bids and declaring a backfill emergency. To this point, the only members of the city commission made aware of this emergency request for clay backfill was the commissioner that stopped the work, the mayor, and the commissioner that was paid for the material. Per the core request, the only bid that could be produced was from the business owned by Commissioner Allen. The continual justification for the entire chain of events was that Jeremy declared the emergency. Well, a little more than two weeks after this, Jeremy resigned with the full severance package and moved on. I know that part of the severance package that he has is that he is to make no disparaging remarks about the city and the city is to make no disparaging remarks of him. I've never received a severance package, but I know and I think that probably here he'd agree that these disparaging remarks, statements are pretty boilerplate now. With that said, it could make getting a straight version and timeline of events, which is all I want to know, more difficult to retrieve if it would put the city in a bad light. And just so everyone's clear on disparagement, it's not like defamation. Defamation typically applies to false statements and requires a degree of ill intent. But disparagement, disparagement is much broader. Essentially defamation is, don't make up bad things about us to hurt us, while disparagement is, don't say bad things about us, even if they are true. So Jeremy is available to provide this information as a consultant for up to ninety days for his severance agreement. So I'm requesting, in full openness and transparency, that someone on this commission, not involved with the work stoppage, selling of material or delaying this information, to please get in touch with Jeremy to produce the three dated bids that we have been told exist, so they're on file. Ask him to clarify what the justification for the emergency was. During this conversation, please ask him why two commissioners were not notified. Why is a declared emergency and change of scope or work or cost conditions was not added to the agenda at the next commission meeting? Why the financial policies and guidelines were not followed? And why if the community development director who worked for him was not aware of free county clay, why wasn't he and why wasn't it used? Even if he could produce bids for a dollar a truckload from two other bidders or Skitches Hauling and Excavating, it would never be as cheap as the definition of free. The citizens of Fort Scott want to know what happened and receive full transparent accountability of why city guidelines were not followed, why the city manager declared an emergency backfill, why nobody challenged the decision, why we don't have copies of required and stated three bids, why a city commission was able to halt an emergency project, why two elected commissioners were not included until after this is done, and why for an emergency was not on the agenda presented to the full commission until September seventh.
And I could tell you, the calls, I'm almost done. I got like that much. Yes, sir. That much.
I can tell you, I mean, I'm a citizen. I mean, you guys know I'm running for office, so my phone's been blowing up on this as well. Okay? Matter of fact, and this is unfortunate, I'm actually hearing the term Clay Day, which I think is ridiculous, but we're actually hearing Clay Day. Yep. So I think that there is an appearance of why we don't save taxpayers money by using the free clay. There is an appearance of too many questionable decisions and possible conflicts of interest that took place during this timeframe. I think if the city commission cannot satisfactorily provide a remedy, and I hope they can, what is in the best interest of our citizens is showed that they took every possible step for transparency, public communications, ethics savings, and met the requirements for the city, county, and Kansas statutes, then those involved should do what is best for our city and seriously reconsider whether or not they should be representing our city and whether or not they should continue remaining as members of this commission. And I respectfully submit those comments.
Can you leave that with Diane?
Okay. I will warn you right now, Mayor, that I was Cliff Noting off of this. This thing is six pages long because I wanted to make sure if there were questions.
Yeah.
That I had everything you might look for.
Do you mind if we look it over and then if we have any questions during the next meeting or get together, answer your question?
I would prefer, actually, if you want to get together one-on-one and discuss it. And again, I think a fair resolution and recommendations is we need a third party of some sort that wasn't involved in the process to see if they can obtain that information that appears to be missing. I mean, we've got everything in here except for the bids and questions that we can ask Jeremy.
Right. Do you leave that with Diane?
Yeah, I'll get that with Diane.
I have a question.
Yes.
Which commissioner stopped the project?
Well, per the nine seven meeting, it was stated that you were the commissioner that stopped the project.
Per the nine seven meeting?
At the nine seven meeting.
And, and in what way was it, was it shown that I stopped the project?
Because you identified that the clay, that was the backfill, that they were going to use the material that had been excavated out to refill the hole and that that didn't meet the ordinance.
And that meant I stopped the project?
Well, they couldn't exactly fill it back in. They had to get clay. If you want to think of another delayed or brought to the attention of, I think in my statement, I said I actually commended you for identifying that, that this material was wrong.
Yeah.
They all knew it was wrong.
They had two options. They had clay, maybe three.
And that it couldn't be used. That was, I didn't write that ordinance.
No, I think he's saying he agrees that you did the right thing. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I do. It's just what took place after that.
I think it's my responsibility to point out a statute to stop being followed. I think that's my responsibility as a commissioner.
Oh, I agree it is. I can tell you-
So why are you lambasting me for stopping the project?
Well, it's, I'll be completely honest with you, Commissioner Allen. In my role, I've been in civil engineering. I was in civil engineering for fourteen years. On top of that, in my current role, as far as emergencies go, I worked for a company where I personally have responded to the pandemic, to Hurricane Katrina, to after nine eleven. I know pretty much what an emergency is, but traditionally in working with these municipal entities, I've never ever in my time, and I deal with a lot of the large municipalities as well, have ever heard of a city commissioner saying, "Stop this project."
I never said stop the project. I just pointed out that that was-
I promised to Mark that I would keep the meeting going fast today. And so I appreciate the comments. Leave them with Diane and then I'll, I know I'll reach out to you personally. We'll get a one-on-one if you're good with that.
I appreciate that. Absolutely. But like I said, if we can try and get the information that I kind of requested on here from Jeremy, because I know that for his contract, you have ninety days.
Right. And I think you asked for not me, Kevin, or Pete to do that, so.
Well, I think-
But yeah, I'm just saying, yeah.
I think it would rest better with the city, the people that brought these concerns forward. If no one that was involved was-
Well, I think there's a reason why two other commissioners weren't involved. The three commissioners weren't reached out to. Two commissioners reached out to Jeremy and the other two didn't, so. But I appreciate your comments.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Commissioners.
Thank you for coming in.
If it's okay, I'd like to make a comment.
Yeah, you can make your comment.
The underlying problem here, what should have been done, is that, that manhole should have been abandoned and a simple eight-inch line should have been taken over and put into the, the manhole a hundred and sixty-five feet from it. That would have cost the city about ten to twelve thousand dollars, would have solved the problem. And we didn't do that. We put in a seventy thousand or sixty thousand dollar manhole that's not, not even feasible. Very easily, we could have just plugged that manhole. We do it all the time. We abandon manholes and go around them and go to the next manhole. We should have done that on this project.
I will comment one thing too that has nothing to do with my company, but when it was said, some commissioners were notified and some were not of the emergency situation. I travel the east side of town quite a bit. I'm out and around a lot every day. And, and I seen the, the crew over there digging the monster hole. And I didn't pay too much attention to it because they're all over town right now and they're digging holes everywhere, putting fiber in for the, for the internet. So it was probably going on for, I would say, two to three weeks before I finally called the city and asked if we had, I had heard a rumor that that was a company that was employed by us to work on a sewer. So that's the first inkling that anyone got. We were not notified by any city staff. We were not notified by the city manager that there was even a project going on. We had to actually, or I did, I had to call and find out what was going on. Then we were, we were notified what was going on. It was an emergency situation. There was a sewer line that collapsed, so on and so forth. So that's where the beginning of the process comes in. So, you know, it just, to me, hearing the words that two or three other commissioners knew about this project, but the other ones didn't, you know, I suppose the defense in that would be that some of them are on the street, were driving around in those areas where they would see things like that and that they would question. And they would call in and ask about, you know, dirt digging and, and holes in the street, things like that. So.
Mr. Mayor, anybody else has made a comment. So just to add to Tim's clarity, which we haven't talked, nobody's questioning the original part of this, or the emergency part, or Pete's part, or anything else. It has to do with the time when it became a non-emergency to purchase the clay. That's what Tim's comments are about. And that's what we need to address as you talk to Jeremy or whoever talked to Jeremy. Mark, you want to give us some direction about that at some point. But anyway, that just, there's two separate issues here and Tim has addressed the second half of the issue. So just so people understand that.
Appreciate it. Jody?
Good evening. I'll try to keep mine within the five minutes.
And that's the cool part about the five-minute rule.
We're pretty easy to get.
I actually-
Josh, you'll have to come back. You missed old business. I'm sorry.
No, 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 she's under, she's under public comments also. Sorry.
I'm doing both. Sorry. Awesome. Yeah. I didn't want to steal the thunder on the other one. We, I'm Jody Hayner with the Healthy Bourbon County Action Team and we are undergoing a community health needs assessment right now. We're working with Ascension Via Christie and CHC and Kansas, KU, University of Kansas to do a survey right now where our goal is to get sixty percent of all households to respond to Community Health and Wellness Survey. So I wanted to just come up here and let you guys know about the survey. Please, please encourage all of the community members and constituents to really respond to the survey. It does take some time, about twenty minutes. And so there is incentive at the end of the survey for ten dollars to spend at Farmer's Market or Union Towns Union Station. The first community health needs assessment that we did was in two thousand sixteen and actually I did it for, when I worked for Mercy Hospital. And it was critical in obtaining our grant funds through the Cross Blue Shield Pathways to Healthy Kansas Initiative. Since that time, we have, we are up to, well, that's five years ago, we are up to almost two million dollars in grant funds, outside grant funds that we have brought in. We have recently been awarded another five hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant. We hope to release that press release. Soon we have money in the bank now. We'll be hiring another employee for that. We'll be doing some placemaking project on East Side and providing grants to small businesses, small startup businesses, minority, women-owned and low-income food retail and restaurants. We did that before and it was very successful. And then we will also be providing grants to farmers and ranchers to extend their season to really try and get that farm to school or farm to retail and restaurant initiative going, that, the capacity building. So anyway, it all boils down to getting that primary data, that straight from the horse's mouth, from the households to help funnel that resources, those resources, those monies to where they, where they're most needed. And the people that know their community best are the community members. So that informs our work to guide our action plan and our strategic evaluation plan and all of that. Any other questions?
Yeah, Jody, what's, what's the health survey website or?
Okay, you can go to hbcat.org and the link is on there. I have some flyers too. We sent these out to every single household in Bourbon County too. And what you do is you just put your camera on this QR code and a link will pop up for the internet browser. And all you do is hit that link and the survey will pop right up. Make sure you- Make sure you write down your voucher number though, so that when you go to Farmer's Market or Union Town, you can claim your voucher. We have tablets and stands set up at Dr. Burke's office, the emergency room, over at Union Town, so, and we should be getting them over at CHC soon. So if people don't have access, they should be able to just right there be able to do it. If they want a paper survey, reach out to me at my email and I'd be happy to provide a paper survey. It's 100% anonymous, it goes straight to KU where they gather and they'll analyze all the data for us. That's all, that service is about a $30,000 services supplied to us through our Blue Cross Blue Shield grant.
You don't review your doctor's report resulted in donations to your organization before?
Well, we did receive a grant from Blue Cross Blue Shield for about $47,000, I'd have to look exactly, to implement this community health needs assessment. So we have earmarked about $34,000 of that to either go to Farmer's Market or to Union Town, Union Station. So in the event that there is going to be, and I'm assuming that there will be some extra funds left over from somebody that either didn't claim their voucher or didn't choose a voucher or something, we'll have to go to the board and see how we want to separate that out between Farmer's Market and Union Station and all that, because we do have an earmark for it. They're open on Tuesday evenings too, so.
Maybe you should go to bed earlier.
You need, and if you haven't been to Union Station to try their sausage rolls, it is well worth the drive out there. And make sure you get there, out there early though, because they go fast. The last time I went, I got three, so I can have one for every meal, and I made Shazi promise she wouldn't tell on me, and I tell, here I am telling you too.
Thank you, Jody.
Thanks, Jody.
Michael Hoyt.
Good evening. September seems to be a long month for me, so I'd be a little refreshing. I need some refreshment in my memory. When did we cut those trees down on 16th?
About two weeks ago.
So you indicated that we were, they got their bucket truck stuck, so we need to get back out there and trim those up. Do we have a timeframe for that? Do we have a timeframe for the fixing of any of the lights, the upright of the, any of that? That can't be five minutes.
Time's up, Michael.
That was her five minutes.
So first of all, no, we don't have a timeframe, but that has to deal with, I'm sorry, in regards to the trees. So the last tree will be trimmed back, it's not going to be cut down, and that will prevent, that will eliminate the visibility problem.
And then Chris Ralabitch has some trees that are on our side that we need to cut down as well?
Absolutely, and what I'd like to do is, what I'd like to request is, as we cut those down, send somebody on that corner to identify which limbs, because they're on south of that, actually, there's some south and north that are actually on the west side.
Now, K-Dot did identify those on the south portion of 12th Street, northbound. They should cut those.
On their own trees.
On their own trees.
That's what I'm saying, but I'm talking about our tree limbs, Michael. I'm talking about on the west side of the fence.
Yeah, I'm not sure why we had to cut those trees down on K-Dot's right of way as it was, but.
Part of it, part of it was timing.
Time, we did it just because we could get to it sooner, rather than go through all the red tape, and they gave us permission to do it, so we figured we might as well go out there and drop them. I think we were there, Jerry, what, probably there day, maybe, somewhere in that neighborhood.
They were big trees.
Yeah, yeah, and they were monster trees, I mean, they were quite a bear to tackle. But as we were there, I went out on the ground and with the guys and viewed, and I said there's some on the, which is actually the west side of the fence, that are our trees that need to be trimmed up, because they're blocking lights also. But I know the light you're talking about also, that they're working on, that was, you had a picture on?
Wall Street on Ramberg.
Right, and I don't think that's been hit or anything like that, they tipped it to work on the electrical, it looks like, for some reason.
Well, I think it was hit because it, you can see where it severed at the bottom. So it's not electrically connected, and we've contacted CDL, but I will follow up on that too.
Okay, and all the flashing lights are going to take care of those?
That's CDL also, yes? And there's a specific department for them that deals only with traffic signal and that such, so, but I, sorry, south of 12th Street, west side of the fence?
Yes.
Okay, how far south of 12th Street?
It's not south of 12th Street, it's going to actually be north of 12th Street.
No, I think he's the one talking about what Michael was talking about, but that's K-Dot.
That's K-Dot indicating that there were on the northbound lane, south of 12th Street.
Right, northbound lane, south of 12th Street.
That there were trees in there right of way that need to be trimmed. That block the view of the lights northbound.
I thought you said though that there was trees on the south side, south of 12th Street, on the west side of the fence that we need to cut.
North of 12th Street.
Okay.
I'm behind the high.
Could you get with me after the meeting?
Absolutely, I'm behind the high school.
I think you're combining Kevin and Pete's together, because there's some south of.
Yeah, if you just come behind the high schools is what I'm talking about.
Yeah, okay. I will, yes, and so CDL have an answer for you next meeting? Hopefully we'll have them worked on by the next meeting.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving right along. We've approved a budget that so far has not been totally transparent to me because I was not provided a copy while I was here with you all reviewing it. But after a review, I believe we have a faulty budget, because some of the state statutes that are cited to justify transfers actually prohibit transfers to the general fund. And let me just read this, it's 12-525-825, sorry, D.
Say that again, Michael.
It's 12-825-D, as in Delta. And I'll paraphrase, because it goes into waterworks, fuel, power, lighting plants, use and investment of revenues, except as otherwise herein provided in any city of the first class, which is us. Waterworks, the revenue deprived, derived, sorry, from the sale and consumption of water, shall not be paid out or dispersed except for the purpose of operating, renewing, or extending the plant or distribution system for which such revenue was derived. The payment on outstanding bond issued for the construction, extension, or purchase thereof, and the payment of salaries of the employees. At any time that there may be surplus of such fund, it shall be needed to redeem the bonds, be quarterly placed in a shrinking or sinking fund, which shall be used for the purpose of redeeming bonds. And I'll skip ahead, when any surplus or either, of either this operating fund or sinking fund is not needed for any of the above stated purposes, said surpluses may be transferred into this city general fund or any other fund of such city, only after we've taken care of all of the maintenance of our distribution system, which we know we have it, and employee salaries.
Are you paraphrasing again, or is that verbatim?
It's verbatim, but I'll make you a copy of this.
Yeah, no, I know it.
So now you broke my train of thought.
Sorry.
So salaries, employee salaries, take that very literally. Employee salaries, not severance packages, not contractual arrangements that we've made with now no longer employees, that cannot be paid out of the water revenues. It was explicitly shown that those funds were taken out of the water revenues. A $250,000 transfer was made out of the water account to bring our cash reserves in compliance. That doesn't say that we can do that. It says you have to fix and pay down your bonds for money borrowed on the water department and infrastructure before you can transfer it to any general fund. I'll be happy to make you a copy of this, but.
Yeah, I think that's something we need to have Susan look into.
Yeah, because I would hate for us, we have till the 24th to submit the budget to the state, I'd hate for it to be defected.
I'll need to get a legal opinion if you guys want to allow that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, legal opinion wouldn't hurt, yeah, I mean, I think we can use the league for a legal opinion as well, so, yeah. Thank you, Michael.
Thanks, Michael.
All right, old business, consideration of allocation of Bourbon County CASA of the sixth judicial district. Sorry, trying to, I believe this was brought up last time.
And I enclosed definition of the statute for you?
I reached out to Travis to see if there's any possible, and I don't think he's here.
Yeah, he's here, Travis.
Travis, did you have him to check to see if there's any possible ways you could utilize any of this money for any drug programs for kids?
You know, DARE has kind of gone on the wayside, at least in our community. I was going to look into that, I have not looked into DARE, that's something we can implement with our school resource officer, with our safety thing, but I don't, I don't know. Other than that, that was the only thing I could think of that.
Is there any programs our SRO officer could initiate that this would help with?
I don't know if that'll meet what the statute, we get grants through.
Oh, well, sorry, my understanding it will, so.
For programs through our SRO?
Yeah, any program that.
Well, yeah, I mean.
And I was just curious, and I reached out to you the other day, I didn't know if you had time to reach out.
Research to see if there's any programs that could help.
Couldn't hear you.
Yeah, what was that, Jody?
She's working, they're working with Mike Tram, I believe she said, yeah, on some tobacco.
We have grant funds that we're working with, Mr. Speck, and Mike Tram, the SRO, on vaping and tobacco cessation campaign and program. So this would go hand-in-hand with drug prevention. That's something we wanted to collaborate and work together on and match funding.
I will just piggyback off that, that RSRO writes, when he writes tickets, they're for vaping.
Absolutely. How old do you have to be to vape, Travis?
How old do you have to be? 21.
21 to vape?
Well, I know the tobacco usage is turned 21.
So typically, what happens when somebody in high school gets caught with a vape?
Through the police department, we'll write tickets.
And what's a, what's a, I mean, is it, go ahead, Sheriff Jody.
Well, Mr. Speck, he's the new vice principal, and so we sat down and had a really good conversation about what happens when kiddos get caught with vaping or whatever they're going to do. When he started at the school, he told me that the two main issues that they had, that the teachers talked to them and the staff talked to him about was discipline and vaping. So the policy that this, that the high school has in place is actually one of the best policies throughout the state of Kansas as far as being a restorative approach to cigarette use and tobacco use and vaping. So what they have done historically is, it's not in the policy per se, but they've given a ticket this year, most of last year, on the first offense. And so what the Healthy Bourbon County Action Team and Mr. Speck talked about was on that first offense, on instead of writing a citation for $106, making sure that they get the tobacco cessation specialist services that they need. Those kids are addicted to that tobacco. They're using those vapes, like, some of those vapes are like two packs, equivalent to two packs of cigarettes a day. So in tobacco, I'm a previous tobacco user.
But you choose, right?
I know that it is so hard to quit, and so, you know, we need to, we need to have more of a restorative approach on offering the needed services to help get those kids off of the tobacco or vaping or whatever. So Mr. Speck and I came up with a concrete plan on how we're going to be able to get those services inside the school, because once they're outside the school, transportation's another issue, how are kids going to get to these tobacco cessation specialists? And because of our initiative, we have regional tobacco cessation specialists at CHC, at Southeast Kansas Mental Health. We trained those specialists, we brought in somebody from University of Massachusetts to train those specialists. So this is a great opportunity to put some of our work together to help our youth.
Yeah, and that's great, I'm glad they're getting help rather than just getting tickets.
Ticket isn't going to do anything, it's been given tickets for years, it's not doing any.
A ticket just upsets a kid, makes him feel like the police is against him, so on and so forth, and like you said, it is a huge addiction right now. I watch, you know, programs about it all the time.
So what I presented to Mr. Speck and Mike Tram, of course, he, his heart is like so big when it comes to kids. I worked with him as a social worker for years and years and years. And Mr. Messer was really engaged in that conversation, the digital arts teachers, that they're going to, they're going to work with the kids on coming up with a campaign for tobacco and vaping prevention, or have a consistent, persistent message about the harms and effects. We're going to hire a very engaging and relevant speaker to come talk to the kids. And so as far as like that initial ticket, because I know some people feel strongly about having that ticket there on that first offense, what I proposed was doing an experiment this first year and see how it goes on, if we can get the services to those kids, the information, and the actual systems in place to get the referrals to the tobacco cessation specialists in place, that, just to see if that will have an impact on, you know, all of these kids vaping in the schools.
And one question, I have another question, if that's all right? This goes to Travis and to Jody, and you both probably have knowledge in this, but when we monitor, you know, kids can't drink until they're 21, and ABC controls that, they can come into your liquor store and make sure you're not selling them.
And they do, yeah.
So I wondered, like, we have vapor stores here in town, we have people that sell vapes, is that monitored as well through the police station or through ABC, or who monitors that to make sure? Because I can go in and eat, and like see minors walk into that store all day long.
ABC will come in and they'll do, including vapes, they'll go, come in with a underage person from usually outside of our community, and they'll do compliance checks.
How often does that happen?
I don't know, I mean.
Is that something you can request?
Usually, I can request that as well, usually that's a proactive event that they do on their own, and sometimes unless they give me a call and say, hey, you know, we were in your community and did some compliance checks, I may not even know that they've done it.
Here's what I feel, I just saw some of those birds the other day, and I thought they were on fire because there was so much smoke coming out of them, and there was just young kids, and there was a puff of smoke behind them, like the wheels were on fire. So it's happening everywhere, it's a pandemic, you want to talk about a pandemic, that's a real one. And, I mean, they're all real, I didn't mean to say that some of them aren't real, but I'm just saying, that's a real bad problem we have right now, and I think we could get a major hold on it if we call for help from that division to say, now would probably be a good time to come in here, because our high school, we got middle school kids that are vaping. It's bad. It's bad, and it's not just vape, there's other illegal.
I appreciate, I know we kind of got off subject on several little bit, but Susan, does this money have to be allocated this year? Okay, and not that CASA's a bad program, but I would love to be able to split it up. Other towns have a little form with this fund that people request money, almost like a grant application. Is there any way we could implement that for people each year?
We can, in the past, we used to give money to the Keyhole, and you know, there's, it's been for years, we've only had requests from CASA, so.
So this year during your budget makeup, you saw that there was a chance to give CASA more money in a time when they've been really hit by the pandemic? And I'm a little unclear about Jody's conversation in terms, Healthy Bourbon County is already financing the program you just discussed?
The Healthy Bourbon County Action Team Board voted to, on this package, to work with USD 234 on the vaping, because from what we heard from the school district, that was the biggest issue that they had. So there will be implementation funds that we'll be able to use to start this process out. But I think, you know, opening up for applications, of course, as the president of the Healthy Bourbon County Action Team, I think it would be, we could use the funds, so.
And the Keyhole doesn't ask for it anymore, is the Keyhole still a thing?
Yeah, it's still operating, but they haven't asked for it in several years.
You know, and it's interesting to me, because as we talk about this, they're an organization that's right across the street, and they may be able to help monitor some of that with some extra fundage. So, you know, maybe we can try to reach out to people that are right directly with them that could help in that sense too.
So I guess I'm not following, we're talking about taking the $10,000 tonight and dividing it, maybe whatever it is, 7,500 to CASA and 2,500 to the Healthy Bourbon County, or?
No, what I'd like to see is just a plan put in place with the money, instead of just giving it, I don't mind giving smaller CASA, because I know they, you know, if we want to give 5,000 to CASA and then keep 5,000 in there, we implement a process where we kind of promote it, you know, let the school, let Keyhole know that this money's still available. Not that, I mean, CASA does great things, but if we can, like Jody said, you know, my son talks about it all the time, going to the bathroom in high school, and there's just, and they have vape detectors, they get ripped off, I mean, it is, it is bad right now at the high school, so if there's any way we could help the school out, would be great.
Yeah, you know I'm all for tobacco cessation, but I bet CASA's also needing to budget there.
Yeah, so I would make a motion to give 5,000 to CASA, and then, we have 10,000 altogether, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to give 5,000 to CASA. Yeah, I'd make a motion to give five thousand to CASA.
Second.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols.
Yes.
Josh Jones.
Yes. Alright, Jody, once again, the parents is Prairie Pathways.
I'm leaving after this, so no worries. I'm Jody Hayner again, with Healthy Bourbon County Action Team, and this time, I'm not gonna be doing a lot of the speaking. This time, we have guests with us today with Thrive Allen County and Livewell Crawford County. Let's see, was it a year, two years ago, we developed a regional byway transportation plan between the three counties? And, and we created this wonderful partnership. COVID kind of put it on hold a little bit. Thrive Allen County promised to get somebody hired to take the reins and to move it forward, and they came through. And so this is John.
What's up, John?
Actually, if you guys don't mind introducing yourselves and like your relationship to the committee, this is John Robb, and he was a, you're gonna have to come speak in the speaker though, so Pete can hear you.
Now, how many Johns are there again? Because I know I met two the other day.
Seriously, listen over at Thrive, just surround yourself with John.
Could, could we get a Larry Darrell and Darryl?
What's, what's one, Johnny C., is that right?
That's one of the qualifications to serve on the committee.
To be a John.
I'm John Robb from Livewell Crawford County. This is my wife Carol, and since you've joined us, I represent the cycling and health community in Crawford County and, and the city of Pittsburgh.
Cycling, is it like a Harley or Honda? Oh, okay. Okay, I didn't know what type of cycle. Mm-hmm.
Alright, my name is John Leahy. I'm John number two for the night. I am the new bikes and trails coordinator over at Thrive Allen County.
Hello, everyone. And everybody, my name is John Castilla, outreach and ABC coordinator for Thrive Allen County, also known as Johnny C. in the office. Thank you so much for presenting. Right now, what we have going around is just a picture of our trail or our pathway that we will be speaking about. First of all, thank you all for having us tonight. For those who don't know, Thrive Allen County is a health and wellness and economic development nonprofit organization based in Iowa, Kansas. We've been working with Healthy Bourbon County Action Team, also known as HBCAT, right? As well as Livewell Crawford County on the first rural active transportation plan, known as the Prairie Pathways Plan, formerly known as the ABC Trails Plan. This is the first one in, in the state of Kansas. The Prairie Pathways Plan was approved by all three counties back in 2019, as Jody mentioned. Again, first rural active transportation plan in Kansas. The funding comes, the funding for the ABC Trails Plan came from Blue Cross Blue Shield and Sunflower Foundation. And right now, when it comes to our signs that we have, those, that funding comes from Blue Cross Blue Shield Pathways as well, and that will be housed with Healthy Bourbon County Action Team. Let's see, sorry. The three routes include Fort Scott to Iowa, Iowa to Pittsburgh, and Pittsburgh back down to Fort Scott. The starting point, the starting point between Fort Scott and Iowa will be in front of the HBCAT office, located on North National Avenue and West Oak Street. The first two signs placements within the city limits, this does not include the starting point, within the city limits will be at the intersection of North National Avenue and Old Fifty-four, which is by the Riverfront Park. Again, as you saw on the sign, these will be placed, we have roughly about twenty-four signs that will be on the Bourbon County side of this route. There'll be, let's see, yeah, I think that is about it. With this, with the sign placements, this is the first phase of the Prairie Pathways Plan. And fortunately enough, Fort Scott and Iowa kind of get to be the head of it.
So what we are coming to ask from you guys today is permission to place the signs in those three locations directly across from HBCAT, the, or from our office, and in the end point in Iowa's gonna be Thrive Allen County. So it'll be nice connecting our two organizations together. And then we also would like to have permission to place them. There's those two signs that will be over at Riverfront, just over on Old Fifty-four Highway. We've been working with Eric Bailey over at the county, and we dropped off the signs, and, and the posts have been over there for a long time now. We ordered them back before COVID hit. And so we'll get, we'll, we'll save twenty-four posts for all of Bourbon County, and then we'll send the others to Thrive Allen County so that their public works can work on those. And Eric has said that it won't be any problem getting them installed.
So the one will be on the east side of National across from your office?
That's what we would like. It's best, it's evidence-based and best practice to have, you know, your trailhead in an area with a parking lot.
And then the other two will be how close together down in the Riverfront?
Well, one is going to be facing as you go to Iowa, and the other one is gonna be facing as you come to downtown.
Any other questions?
How are you marketing these?
Marketing?
Marketing. Are, is there any tourism marketing for the trail?
As of.
I'm sorry.
So we, of course, we don't do anything that we don't just like announce to the world, like over and over and over again. So we actually have started coming up with some, I different communication strategy as far as having a really big grand opening. One in Iowa at Thrive, one at the Healthy Bourbon County Action Team here, inviting the press and media, just like we did over when we announced, when we unveiled like the plan. We had two news stations over at the courthouse, and we had all three counties, county commissioners, county commissioners there, and it was a huge showing. So we'll be sure to promote that. And then, these guys have access to a really, really broad range of biking community, social networks. And so word of mouth will be a huge part of what we do.
What's the end goal? I mean, is there more than three, the end goal, or just right now, Fort Scott, Iowa, Pittsburgh?
The plan here, the Johns were really super smart, and they brought a copy of the, the plan. And so each of, each of these has some different routes, like the historic route that everybody talks about, the Jefferson Highway, it's in here. So after we get this initial route done, we can start exploring what other routes we wanna do. I think it would be cool if eventually we would be able to connect from Katy Trail all the way up to Humboldt's Prairie Spirit Trail.
And what is that trail, when it goes through Garnet? What is that?
Prairie Spirit.
Is that it? Yeah, that, that's really cool. Goes through all the trees and the railroad track and all that.
Yeah, and you guys can talk about how much tourism you get from those trails.
Yes, we definitely do. We, one of the common things that we talked about is there's a group from Humboldt that rides down all the way to Iowa for Dairy Queen, and then rides right back. And then our, one of our board members has ridden the Prairie Spirit, as well as the South Wind Trail, that kind of connects Humboldt and Iowa to the Prairie Spirit Trail.
It's really cool.
Mayor, can I ask a couple of questions?
You may.
Alright. I'm looking for, what is the exact route from Fort Scott to Iowa? Is it Old Fifty-four?
What? Yes.
Okay.
Oh, not, not, not.
Okay, could, could you explain the map a little bit? I mean, there's a small section that has white and red dots, maybe?
So the, the trail actually goes to, on Old Fifty-four, up through Union Town into a back road, and then up through there till it gets to T-T, and it goes through Bronson, and then on the, let's see, on the, this side. So it'd be south side of Fifty-four, but that, but that's when you are on the other side of Bronson into Allen County. So it's clear as mud.
At any point, will they be on the existing Fifty-four Highway?
I think going through Bronson.
No.
No, no.
Not in Bourbon County, no.
Okay.
Not in Allen County either.
Okay.
There is, there, we had to make sure that these, these signs were all the permanent transportation kosher, because there will be a time where they will be on Highway Seven, or not, yes, Highway Thirty, that goes from, oh, what highway is that? To Gerard.
Connects up with Green or Walnut.
Green, yes.
Okay, alright. Thank you. And the only thing you can take on them is bicycles? Can you ride motorcycles on them?
No.
No?
I mean, you can on the road, obviously, but to address your concern about that dotted line there, that is to denote a gravel road, so there are different surfaces as well that you're riding on.
Thank you.
Alright, anyone make a motion to allow these three signs?
Yeah, I'm, I'll make the motion to put them up. I think it sounds great. Appreciate you guys doing all that, really do. All the Johns. Well, two of you, but I'm, one of, you gotta guess which one I'm not thanking. I'm just kidding.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols.
Yes.
Josh Jones.
Yes. Thank you, guys.
Alright, Kirk Sharp, Gordon Parks Celebration.
Words of Jerry Lee Lewis.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to inform everyone now, I think everybody here probably at the city commission knows about their annual Gordon Parks Celebration. This year, we're celebrating the seventeenth and eighteenth annual celebration. Unfortunately, we couldn't have the celebration last year due to COVID, but we're making up and big strides for it this year with two honorees. Kyle Johnson, who portrayed Gordon's character, Newt, in the film The Learning Tree, will also be, will be here. And also along with that, we're gonna have another honorary, Eli Reed. He's an acclaimed photographer and author, who's also a former professor at the University of Texas and, and published a lot of photos in Magnum Photos for them. And also did a lot of still photography, a lot of films, such as Rosewood, Ghost of Mississippi, Beautiful Minds, and a host of others. And so we got a big three-day pool of events from the grand opening of our Learning Tree Film Tree Signs Trail. That I think most of you, all the commissioners probably got the invite to the grand opening, along with the, the Learning Tree and Fort Scott's revisit with Gordon Parks. That's gonna happen all on that day. Also, Kyle's going to introduce the Learning Tree Film. We're gonna have a Learning Tree Film showing that day on that Thursday, and it's gonna be a lunch and learn event with the Gordon Parks, Fort Scott, and the Learning Tree revisited in comparison to the novel book, to the book that Gordon written in nineteen sixty-three, to the film that was released in nineteen sixty-nine. And then also, we're gonna have a photographer on that evening, Doug Barrett, based out of Manhattan, Kansas, who's done a lot of great work. He's also published in Time Magazine, and he's, he's done everything from follow the Black Lives Matter movement to capturing homeless veterans on the streets. So it's a wide range. We're gonna have the, also the, trying to go down the list of things that's happened. We're gonna have Angela Bates, is going to come down from Nicodemus, Kansas, and talk about children of the promised land, about the town Nicodemus, Kansas, that established and late passed the post-Civil War, the all-black community. It's actually national, it's now a national historic site. We're gonna have Professor John Mason, coming from University of Virginia, is gonna talk about to our book club, that we worked in conjunction with the Fort Scott Library, on the Gordon Parks biography book, The Choice of Weapons. And then we're also gonna collaborate with the Lowell Milken Center too, because they're gonna have a vailing of their exhibit, the African-American Women's Suffragettes. One of them is Langston Hughes' mother, and another one, I, I can't remember her name, I'm sorry. And then also, what I'm here for is we're gonna have part of our celebration is Dominique Cammons, that we had for a fundraiser event, that I think most people heard about how spectacular it was, that we're gonna have them back again, part of our celebration. And it's gonna be on October the eighth, and it's, this time's gonna be at the River Room. And because we had such a fantastic showing, we just needed some more room and more space for that. And so we're gonna have that here at the River, well, at the River Room. It's gonna be on Friday the eighth. And so what I'm asking the commission is for permission to block off parking, similar like we did the year before when we had the celebration, we blocked off parking in the River Room. The parking lots that we're looking at is the Old Fort Boulevard, and I'd call, I still call it the Scoobits Plaza area, directly east of the River Room, and the side of National along the Luther's Barbecue, that part, and in front of Luther's, which I, I don't know if that's still city required or control, or that's. Dave Lys, Dave's been wonderful to work with. He's said he'll just work with the best he can to block off parking. The reason why we asked to block off parking, is if you drove by at Luther's neighborhood, Sharkey's on the Friday evening, it's pretty packed. And we're gonna bring a lot of folks from out of town. They're coming from Georgia, Tennessee, California, Nebraska, you name it, they're coming from all over. So we're bringing a lot of folks, bringing a lot of revenue for the sales tax, of course, to help boost that economy up for us, and we do that every year. And so that's just more parking, more opportunities. Some people's gonna come from all over, so we wanna just kind of create a little bit more space for the attendees during that time. So we're not gonna ask for, to block off the whole half of the north side of Fort Scott. We're just want to block off a little bit of that park, and just for the time being, so folks can, that's traveling from long range, ranges from all over that has the opportunity to park and come inside, and also go eat at Luther's, go eat at Sharkey's, Crooners, New Grill, and everywhere else in the community too as well.
What road did you say again? What you need, what do you need block off again?
I, I believe it's going to be Old Fort Boulevard area, the Scoobits Plaza parking lot. I still, I call it the Scoobits Plaza parking lot.
Right across from Luther's?
Right across from Luther's, directly east, and that size section along Luther's off National on both sides. Just pretty much the direct, we're trying to get mostly targeted at area on the east side of Luther's, and, and probably in front of Luther's. We're not, we don't even try to attempt to necessarily park near the Sharkey's, behind the Sharkey's area. We just want a, a piece of the pie. We don't want the whole pie.
So it's gonna be a one-lane National?
Well, are, are we looking at reserve parking there, or?
Yes.
How will you control that?
We're gonna have some volunteers that's gonna help man those parking barriers, and we're, we also asking, and it worked out wonderful last time with the local works, that they brought some cones and barriers for us, and we're just gonna have some volunteers just help just man that to try to reserve that park for a while. And we done that la, not the last year, but the year before, when we had one of our events at the River Room, and everything worked out very wonderfully.
Yeah, I've got some additional blockades if you need some.
I appreciate it, because we definitely need it.
Sometimes, decent person.
And to, to add on to the other events too on that Saturday, we're gonna have K.E. Professor and Oscar-winning filmmaker Kevin Willmont is going to do a tribute celebration, because this is the fiftieth year anniversary of the film Shaft, the iconic film that Gordon Parks directed. And so he's gonna do a session basically talking about Shaft, talking with Gordon Parks' son, David Parks, because David was part of that filming during that time. So he's gonna be here. And also, we're gonna have a panelist group talk about Gordon's primary objective, that he picked up his camera, his weapon of choice to fight against three things he disliked in America, racism, poverty, and discrimination. So we're gonna have a panel discussion on that. And then we're gonna have a photographer, historian Don Thompson, come from Tulsa, Oklahoma. He's gonna talk about the Tulsa, Tulsa massacre and the centennial and the updated information. He was here last, I keep on saying last year, the year before, when it did the Greenwood revisit, so now he's gonna talk about the impact of the, of the centennial. And then we're going to have another showing, a film of Shaft, and then we'll have a tribute dinner too as well. And throughout the whole time of the celebration, there'll be opportunities for folks to drive around on our Learning Tree Film Tree Scene Sign Trails, that the signs will be up. And so if you recall, I came to you all about a year ago, about this time, to ask permission for the signs to start this project. Well, the project is, is coming to fruition, fruition.
Ruition.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And it's gonna be, it's completed, so we're just gonna put the ribbon, so to speak, on it, and.
Now, will there be a map of those, Kirk? I mean, can you pick up a map of those somewhere?
Yes, we're gonna have maps available at the museum. We're gonna have maps available at the Chamber of Commerce, at the hotels, and they're gonna be very similar to, I brought one, because I knew you would ask that.
Well, I think it's interesting, because as you're driving around, like I said earlier, I'm kind of a man of the streets, and when I'm driving around through the countryside, I see one of those things there, catch it out of your eye, and you have no idea that some of those spots were in the film.
Right. So we got several brochures ready to print. We're not gonna have those out until the signs are fully up, but we got the cover. Right, so, we got several brochures ready to print, we're not gonna have those out until the signs are fully up, but we got the cover. And they're, they're pretty much a series of patterns, matches our signs too as well, with the picture Gordon directing. And when you open up on the inside, it's gonna have the actual driving trail to all the scene locations. So you, it's, we're not gonna say start at this location, start at that location, it's up to each and the visitor and individual to start whatever they want to do, cause with time limited, what they have to do, what they wanna do too as well, so. It's a great opportunity, we're gonna, it's a three, uh, three foot by two foot sign with the QR codes, we'll have a virtual tour with it too as well. And so it's a great opportunity to capture the historical time when Gordon became the very first black filmmaker, making major motion picture movie in Hollywood. And called The Learning Tree, so we, it's another way we can honor that, that not just Fort Scott citizens can be proud of, but all Kansas too as well.
A couple of things I would like to say is thank you for, for what you're doing, I know we've had a couple of phone calls back and forth on some signage. I think it's really cool, I think it was a great idea, I don't know whose it was, but um, great, great plan. And uh, the last thing I had to say was that movie you spoke of earlier, Shaft.
Shaft.
Is there any quotes that came from a movie like that, that you would tend to use from time to time? I didn't know.
Shut your mouth.
How'd I know that was the one you would pick?
Yeah, yeah.
Should we open the follow what he's asked us to do?
Yeah.
Barriers, yes.
Yeah, second.
Randy Nichols?
Yes.
Pete Allen?
Yes.
Kevin Allen?
Yes.
Josh Jones?
Yes. Thank you Kirk.
Thank you guys.
Good presentation Kirk, thank you.
Finance Director. Update? Nothing? Interim City McManager update?
I would like to move my update to the end of fourteen, please.
End of fourteen?
Thank you.
Engineer Firm Update?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor Commissioners. Uh, just go through my list, I guess the chronologically the first thing we're trying to finish is, I'm trying to help with the cost share application for the Sixth Street Horton. So we've got some, some new exhibits that we wanna send. I think Susan's the P O C for that, so we'll get you those. Are you planning on sending that before the twenty-fourth?
Whenever you get it to me.
Okay. So we'll get that, and I'll
It's probably noon by the twenty-fourth, they usually have that noon deadline, I don't remember. So we probably, okay.
Okay, uh, next project, uh, Whole Faithful Manhole Project is ongoing, we're working through the specifications and seeing, I think we mentioned before, we wanna go through your current specs and make sure there's not any contradictions, I know we got through uh, those ordinances last time, uh, so that helps. Uh, so we wanna make sure that's in there and we can present in whatever fashion we need to, to either update or replace portions of the spec. And a lot of that points to the standard drawings in the back. Uh, making sure those match uh, specification. Uh, next one, I'm sure you've all got it on your list, the National Avenue Overlay. Uh, they had some delays again this last weekend. So we talked with the contractor, uh, myself and Jesse both. Uh, so they've assured us that this Saturday is good to go, the milling is, is completed. So at least it's all, it's all cleaned up and ready for the asphalt. So they said Saturday, so we'll be making calls prior to that to make sure.
They're saying again this Saturday?
Uh, next one, active projects out to bid, uh, Union Block Alley was approved for rebid, so that's scheduled for a bid opening on the thirtieth of this month. Uh, we also advertised the Centers Sewer Lining Project. Uh, we made contact with a lot of contractors and their feedback. Uh, resulting in us moving that to an October fourteenth bid opening instead of the thirtieth. Uh, next one as we'll talk about probably later, uh, the below grade work on the Sharkey's and Hammond's Building is complete, so the next step was the above grade process. So we do have the Structural Engineers Report, which I've sent to staff. Uh, as well as the contractors that were on the list before. Uh, the only thing to note, a contractor out of Pittsburgh uh, contacted me, Derek Hykes. He does a similar type of restoration work.
I believe he's from here at one time.
He might be, yeah, so he was added to the list uh, of contractors, so they're all supposed to look through the report, uh, which basically kinda lines out what is needed to work on the walls. Uh, and we propose that we take quotes uh, on the fourteenth of October.
Have we got any bids in on the, you mentioned the bids on the alley, have you, have we received any bids yet? And they got till the thirtieth? Yeah, they'll come in right at the last anyway.
Yep, they will.
Yeah, and so if any questions that come through, we'll take care of those, of course Ag Engineering was still the, the designer of that, so.
Yeah, and if you don't mind, I mean, it would be nice to reach out to them, again, you know, like, you know, typically sometimes we do that with demolition or whatever, reach out to make sure if we have it by the time they're due, just a friendly reminder to the local companies or what have you, to make sure.
Yeah, and we uh, thank Diane, she sent a, a long list of uh, contractors that deal with concrete. So we went through all those, you know, called, tried to make contact, you know, did research. You know, some of them still are in business, some weren't.
Sure.
So I think comparative to last time it was advertised. Uh, we've reached out directly to many more uh, local folks.
Yeah.
The only thing I ask is, I know Rob and Susan and I sat in that meeting with SHPO and um, the state, so any above grade work, we make sure that SHPO.
Yeah, so I, all I need that for there is a contact. And we can coordinate whatever we need to.
I think if everyone's okay, if Rob can be that point of contact with, for SHPO. If you're good with that. Mark, do you see any problem with that, or anyone?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't, I wasn't thinking about it, so you caught me off guard, I don't know if that's uh, the most appropriate, I, we, can we have two different contacts?
Yeah, we can, I just, I just know that.
I just need to be
Yeah.
Kind of
I just don't want, I don't, yeah, and I would, I suggest, but, I know we've already had contact with them, and Rob was our point of contact with them. And so, I don't want to have to start all over, or, you know, go through the process two or three times.
We can get fines if we don't um, be in contact with SHPO, because it is, one of the buildings is a contributing building. So, we need to be sure that we're
Yeah, 'cause they made clear that last time, because the building wasn't
So include Rob Harrington and Susan Bancroft, please.
Alright, well, we'll just move right on to new business, I think this might be
One other question, sorry, just, just to confirm, we're okay waiting till October fourteen? Wait a minute, there were some, October fourteenth for the bids for the above ground work. Is that, is that what I understand?
Yes, that's my proposal, and what, what we've, what we've done with this process, uh, because of the nature of it. You know, when we did quotes for the low grade, you know, the, the intent was to make sure we were you know, trying to get actual restoration contractors involved, so we compiled a list of interested parties. Which I think, you know, Pete O N B was, completed that below grade work. Uh, Mid Continental Restoration, there's a five M.
So, so how's
But there's like four or five now.
How, how soon can they start after that October fourteenth bid is done, yeah?
So they're gonna be at the Liberty of materials typically, but if it's just the initial beginning, I think they can begin as soon as we can get them a notice to proceed.
So, or, and is there a certain urgency about getting that started?
I mean, the, the issue now is, because of the sump pump that needs to be installed. The backfill will not be able to be placed until that's completed. And that contractor is already obligated to another project, so he's already told me he's thirty days out.
Okay, so I just wanna, I guess my question is, we're moving forward rapidly, is that the project will allow us to move forward, is that what you're saying?
Okay.
And we'll check, I'll try to touch base with those folks and see what kind of limitations the, the cold weather puts on them and all that, so.
Thank you.
Alright, new business consideration of change order for below grade project. O N B Construction.
Yep, so I wanna go, I guess, in order of what needs to be approved, I guess, so the first item would be uh, the change order, so that, what that really does is cover his additional cost, he, he went ahead and got tarps, and kinda sealed up those parapet walls. Uh, 'cause every time it rained, the water, and at one point someone said water got down that wall of the Hammond's Building and was coming out of a, a hole in the wall, so. So there was a, a problem there, 'cause part of the issue was with his work, he needed to get that wall as dry as possible to apply that waterproofing. Uh, which then, in conjunction with that, you know, with that sump back there, when it rained, he had to pump water out of there, which was not a planned expense either.
Does anyone have any questions on that? How to entertain a motion?
So, so move.
Second.
Kevin Allen?
Yes.
Randy Nichols?
Yes.
Pete Allen?
Yes.
Josh Jones?
Yes. Alright, um, does anyone care if we go ahead and move I up next, since it's the engineer also?
I think he's got another part on that.
Oh, you got another part, oh, sorry.
Yeah, we're kinda splitting it.
Oh, sorry.
So that it goes in order, so the next, and I, with that, so from the change order, his work is complete, I sent a certificate of substantial completion as well, so that's on file. And so that leads us to, it's, it's noted as pay request too, but that is final pay request, so there's no retainage. And everything is, is done, so just wanted to clarify that as well. For that, so the approval for the final payment.
Okay.
So move.
Second.
Randy Nichols?
Yes.
Pete Allen?
Yes.
Kevin Allen?
Yes.
Josh Jones?
Yes. Alright, is that it on that one?
Yes.
Alright, so does anyone have any problem with moving I up next, since it's a Jason thing also?
Which one is that?
Uh, consideration of bid for French Drain and Sump Pump.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, if you want, we'll go ahead and discuss that. Are the bids in our packets?
Yes, they are, very last one.
Not mine.
Last, last three pages.
Yep.
Or four pages. One is two pages, and, one is two pages, one is one page. One estimate is from Stotons Incorporated, the other one is from French Plumbing. Sorry, mi- mine is not divided into sections.
Number six, but mine is
It's in that new package that's in front of you, that's, that's paper put together.
Underneath?
Oh, here.
Yes, that's where it's at. Sorry.
That's alright, you don't have to apologize, I just was saying I went through my packet with mine too.
It was up, the agenda was updated. Now, it's the very last one there.
Have you had a chance, Jason, look through these bids at all?
Uh, just finishing that right now.
He just got them.
Would you rather us wait till, move us back to the
No, you're fine, I'm, I'm aware of what needs to happen, so.
Um, anything on either one of these bids? Um, concern you or any questions or anything?
So I just wanna make sure that they're equivalent, 'cause I'm not sure how it was presented to them, I know Ma- Mark personally kinda made this happen, I think, which we appreciate.
Well, I, I will tell you that Kevin came over and we had a good conversation and good education. So after that, uh, I was in, I think I was instructed before though, to uh, call the plumbers, and I called five different plumbers, uh, uh, or left a message for them, asking for them to bid on this, and I needed it by twelve noon on Friday of last week. Uh, only two plumbers got back to me, and I even followed up, but only two got back to me, that's why there's two bids in front of you.
Well, I think it's important to announce also that on the first bid, uh, under miscellaneous near the bottom for gravel, it's uh, from Kevin Allen. So I don't want anybody to think that uh, uh, Mr. Stotin had called me and asked me how much for, for gravel to backfill that. And I'd just like to be open and honest, and say that that phone call was made to me, so I don't know whether I could solicit business, business to the city of Fort Scott through a plumber. I would like to think I could, but perhaps we should take it out, Randy? Does that bother you?
Uh, I have to follow what you just said.
It's Kevin Allen, Skitch is hauling an excavation.
Stotin was calling you just to figure out how much it costs for gravel.
He's saying that he'll use me.
Okay, well, I don't know, can the city supply that?
As I understand, the city can provide it. So I might be wrong.
Yeah, no, no, the city can use it, I mean, it, it also goes to a point.
When it, when it needs to be, it's gotta be clean rock.
Yeah, you can, you can sure get it, Jerry, that, that's for sure, and there's no problem with that. Um, it all goes back to also uh, working on a project, I mean, I recall years ago when the city of Fort Scott had their own asphalt plant. And they started soliciting business, they would sell asphalt to the citizens of the community at cost. It was a great deal, I mean, it was gonna be a great deal, and we had our own batch of plant down there at Pete's old place. Um, and uh, you could buy the asphalt for cost. What happened was, a, another asphalt company came to the uh, came to head, and they said, we don't want you competing with private enterprise, because this is a project that, you know, completes private enterprise, so on and so forth. And, and they put the hold on that asphalt plant, am I correct, Susan, you remember that? And, and, and we could not compete anymore, so we shut her down, we sold the asphalt plant and away she went. So that, go ahead, Randy, do you have something you need to say?
I, I'm, I'm just trying to follow, I understand what you're saying, but you asked me a question, and, and so as you look at this, for, because of the other issues going on, the people concerned, I, I think you'd be much better off if, if this was done as a, as a complete bid, I guess this is contracted through, the people, people were uh, were gonna uh, vote to do it, so, so I don't know, I, again, it, it speaks to the ethics of the issue and how the community's gonna perceive it, so.
Absolutely.
If you're gonna do it.
So I think we would say make a motion that this bid looks good, except for Kevin Allen on it.
I think that's probably the
Absolutely, let's do that.
Safest thing to do.
That's great.
And the issue comparatively, the, the other bid excluded gravel, so
Yeah, yes.
That would help.
The other one says gravel to be provided by the city.
So, and I'm trying to find the bid, so the one gravel provided by the city was Okay, eighteen thousand, and then, oh, the second, okay. The second page on Stotons, um, their bid's eleven thousand eight, so about fourteen, sixty-three hundred less.
Yeah.
Yeah, so looking at their breakdown, one is maybe more thorough than the other, but I think the, the intent of the, of the work is the same, so.
So, you, on the, I mean, Stotins is a low, you'd recommend Stotins? Um, and we can provide the gravel? So, if we recommend, if we approve this minus the nine hundred dollars, and we provide the gravel? Yes. Wouldn't that be fine to take back to Stotins and make sure they're good with that?
I can do that, absolutely, I, I mean, unless, unless they don't want to take this minus the gravel. I, I don't know why they wouldn't, but I mean, uh, as long as, as long as the city can provide the one inch clean gravel that's needed, okay.
All it is is from the Rockway Mart.
Yeah, and, and what, also, if I could add, what I like here is they've also included an alarm on here. Which is really important, Stotons has, and, let's say that sump pump fails. There's an audible and a visual alarm that will notify the folks in Sharkey's that the pump's not working. That's really important.
Well, this, this kinda goes back to what uh, Mr. Van Hooky was saying earlier, you know, one commissioner saw the bid from the last one and said, hey, we probably need to bid this out, 'cause what was the estimate we got before? That we were gonna accept, we were just gonna accept it blindly, what was that?
It was twelve thousand two hundred?
Yeah, and it was doing less work, was that correct?
It would've been the same.
Oh, it was, it was tying in the sewer.
Well, but it, I don't think so, could you go ahead and elaborate on that, 'cause it wasn't the same?
It didn't
Yeah, we didn't intend to do that, but.
Yeah, no, and that's what, well, and we don't have to get into the whole thing.
And that's, no, and that's what I was saying, I said, you know, that's, that's the beauty of an active commission, just saved you know, some money and some money and did probably the more correct way. So, but anyways, if your recommendation is, I'll, I'll make the motion to take Stotons' bid, um, minus the nine hundred dollars for gravel and the city providing gravel?
I like it, yeah, I'll second that. Or should, I, can I second it? I took myself out of it.
Yes.
I can second that. So make sure and stay on the up and up.
Pete Allen?
I, I would like to, uh, uh, discuss that a little bit. We, uh, here again, we don't have a contract. We don't have specifications, all we have is an estimate. Uh, I don't see how we can, uh, approve, uh, approve this project, project without specifications.
Yeah, I would like to request, basically, if we can get submittals from the plumber of what, like a plan and his pipe specs.
I think it has everything on there, doesn't it?
This, this was, this bid was based off your.
Well, I never talked to that guy personally, so.
But based off the sheet you gave us, off the one you did talk to. Did you talk to anybody about doing this project?
No, I talked to Pete O M B.
And you had, you had a little design.
Sub it under, right.
So we'll use that design you gave Pete to send off to this one?
I don't think so. No, that's not correct.
Yeah.
Um, I think we, we sent that design, okay.
So let's back up.
Yeah. So let's back up. Originally, when we talked about this, as I came in and talked about, we wanted to waterproof the wall, right? So that's, we wanted to waterproof the wall and have a sump pump, and the whole design, um, outside sump pump to where it would collect from the French drain with gravel, to when we backfill, it's secure, it's safe, there's not putting pressure on Sharkies' wall. It's all good stuff. And I think the design before, if I'm correct, and correct me if I'm wrong, Pete, but it was inside the building? The sump pump was supposed to be?
The French drain was in the, uh, south side of Sharkies' wall. What I bid was to go through the wall on the bottom side into a pit inside of Sharkies.
Yeah.
Right. But see, there was no French drain on the drawing.
Yeah, originally, there, we.
There was no French drain.
The French drain, because of all his issues, we originally didn't see a, a, a dire need for a French drain. Is it a good idea? Yes. Is it entirely necessary? Maybe not. But it's a good, it's gonna, it's gonna be a benefit to Sharkies. Which is why the original intent was, well, then we'll put the sump up in Sharkies because it's benefiting Sharkies. And we talked with, with David Life, and he checked into it and ultimately agreed that was fine. Uh, and so I understand the issue after that became the discharge pipe would have to come back out of his basement and go into the alleyway, and he's got stuff along his back wall outside that it would be difficult to do that. We understood that. You know, but, so, an alternative is fine, and the only thing that I would warn is that it's still not city property. It's still the C D L building owner's property that this work is going into, so I think you at very least need an easement.
Mark, have you visited with him, because we talked about them being okay with Clay being on it?
I visited with him. I did not visit him to ask him if he needed, if we should get an easement, um, because I.
Right, it's kind of, it's complicated, because it's benefiting his neighbor, but it's on his property.
So here's a question. Uh, why don't, would it be a good idea to back up from this, uh, tonight, accepting this tonight and find out from the property owner?
Might as well, we backed up, I, I.
Why not approve it?
Disconnect coming from, of putting these out the bid and not, and then you saying, well, we don't have a design, we don't, where's the disconnect coming from? Why we're not prepared?
There's nothing extraordinary about the design, so.
Yeah, and I understand that. I think what Pete said, Kevin, you've done this before. Have you ever had a design on doing one of these?
Me?
Yeah.
Have I had to come up with a design, or I tell the homeowner? No, it's not too elaborate. I, I tell the homeowner how I'm going to do it.
Yeah, I mean, you have a design, you have an engineer drop you a design to do all that.
No, sure.
Is this something you think needs to go out for engineered or designed or like that?
In my world, it's pretty simple, and I think even Pete being here tonight would agree that this is the proper way to fix it, um.
If we approve this bid, is this something you can get with and think you can come up with a?
Yeah, and like I said, I can assist the plumber and make sure that we're on the same page.
So you have no problem with us accepting this bid tonight? You don't see any?
No. Like, the only, like I said, the only warning is, it's going into someone else's property.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I think you can accept it, but we need to pursue.
Right.
Making sure that is okay. And he might just say that he doesn't care, but.
Well, you know, typically, we don't work on private property, but this is a, this is a special circumstance, so I think Pete had something he wanted to say.
Yeah, and that's why I'd like to see what the plumber's getting. I mean, he says he'll get a appropriate pipe, which is fine, but.
I would say it's probably gonna be, you know, I'm just assuming, it doesn't say on here, but I'm assuming it's gonna be S D R thirty-five and, and that's gonna be your, your, yep, your three hole. No, not there. No, typically. Though typically what would happen, when, and this is, this is my recommendation, you know, I'm not trying to be involved and I'm not going to make money off this. That's all right. So ti- typically, typically what would happen was as you backfill this and you compact the clay, I would not think that it'd be a wise idea to compact clay up against a basement that you've just, uh, waterproofed and has never had compaction against it before in life. Ever, ever since that building's been standing, it's been kind of freestanding with the other buildings. So now, if you bring clay in, you compact that, that's gonna, people that don't know what happens with clay is it expands and it contracts. And as it starts pushing that basement, eventually Sharkies could have basement issues. It could push the foundation in. So what we would do is we'd bring that clay in, in four inch, six inch lifts, and we'd keep it, say, five foot away from that basement, and then we'd bring it back in and we'd backfill all the way to the top with that gravel. It has no, um, compaction to it. The one inch clean is gonna be, there's no pressure to it, and when that water, the rainwater comes in, it hits that wa- that rock, and it goes straight to that pipe, hits that sump pump and is gone, and you're not going to have any problems with the, that's how we, I mean, that's just what we do. Yeah, at least two, three, four, five feet wide, however you can, keep the pressure off that wall. Absolutely. Absolutely, that's what I think. Yeah, 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 those are all, those are all things that were discussed in there about, but, but I mean, like, if you want to see it, that's great, but they're talking about, I think, cutting the concrete away, getting below the footing for their gravel and their pipes setting on top of it and so on. Uh, I mean, you can't, it's not going to do no good to keep that concrete there.
And I just, the structural engineer, he commented in his report about, uh, that wall being backfilled and, and it's fine, because it's basically, it's constructed the same as the opposite wall, which has backfill against it. So the deduction is that.
No, okay.
Oh, the thing we told, uh, the demo guy was, we just don't want any vibratory compaction. So it, it would have been fine either way, but I, I agree, if it's, if it's a drain tile, you need the gravel. The clean rock and.
Yeah, I've seen too many basements that have, you know, yay much gravel over the top of it and then clay, and it just never works, but, I mean, you guys are up to do whatever you want to do.
I pushed my own basement wall in.
Yeah.
By doing that, yes. I, and I agree with what you're saying, but here again, that's why we need specifications. This is how we get ourselves in trouble, is without specifications, without us, you know, we have an engineer on staff.
Yeah, so like I said, I will review.
Yeah, so you're, you're fine, you're fine with doing the specs one-on-one with whoever we give the bid to? Okay.
So the motion is to approve it pending, uh, engineer's approval and approval of.
We have a motion and a second actually already.
For the bid, yeah.
For the bid.
Yes, for the bid. Okay. So Pete Allen?
Read, read the, uh, motion.
The motion is to recommend Stotin Plumbing minus the nine hundred dollar, um, gravel part of that, that the city will provide the, the gravel. Um, Josh made the motion, Kevin Allen seconded it.
So we can offer an amendment to that?
You say you want to offer an amendment to it?
That it includes, uh, certification by the engineer prior to beginning the project?
Yeah, I want to pull my second.
You're gonna pull it?
Yeah.
I don't think he has to, I mean, we just.
Okay.
I just do.
Amendment to motion. You need to second the, second the.
Okay, Josh, Josh had the original motion.
Yeah, I mean, I, I thought it was just, yeah, that's fine. I figured that was already happening, if your engineer was on staff to do that, so.
Okay.
If we had to make a amendment, but hopefully, you're working one-on-one with the contractor, make sure everything's done right, anyways.
You're okay with the amendment then?
Yes.
Okay. So we need a second to the motion now with the amendment.
I'll withdraw the amendment, but it can, if it's that confusing, I'm just trying to be sure the engineer was on board to confirm it to it, so. I'm, I'm not sure, parliamentary-wise, what we're doing. Somebody needs to second the, uh.
I already did.
Second the amendment?
Nope.
Okay, then we'll withdraw the amendment.
Yeah.
Call.
He's got it. You still need a second to the motion then?
Nope, already got it. Go ahead, Diane.
You withdrew it.
I withdrew when you put your amendment in there. My second to the original stands.
Okay.
So the motion is to recommend Stotin Plumbing. Their invoice minus the nine hundred dollar gravel part of that invoice with the city to provide the gravel. Um, Randy Nichols.
Yes.
Pete Allen?
Not without the engineer's approval, I'll say no.
Kevin Allen?
Yes.
Josh Jones?
Based on the engineer's recommendation approval, I'll say yes.
That's what the amendment was about. I don't know why we did that, okay, good.
Thank you, Jason. I think that's all we have for you. All right, be discussion of definition of emergency purchase in the city's purchase policy.
That's in your packet there. It's, uh, financial policies for the city of Fort Scott at the bottom of page fifty-four, it says on there. Says emergencies.
So I think the question is, like, on the project on Third Street. Sorry.
Yeah, I don't know if, if you folks want me to read what it said.
The key word is immediate. And so I think when we go back to the whole Third Street thing, there was no immediate, um, danger. The project was called an emergency, then did not start for, I believe, at least fourteen days.
Three and a half weeks.
Three and a half weeks. So I think we need to tighten up, um, that policy. The word immediate, I believe, by definition is no longer than twenty-four hours. And so with the project starting, um, three weeks later, I don't know if it's even qualified as emergency.
Are you, are you asking for it to be clarified in the definition?
Well, I guess if we clarify what immediate is.
Is immediate danger, I mean.
Yeah.
What was there, a sinkhole or something like that? Was what we was worried about? We was worried about a hole in the street? That was a.
I don't.
Yeah, and, and we can, yeah, and, and going forward, we just need to clarify what immediate is. That's the key word, immediate. The, the other thing I would like to see, um, and I just pulled up some other towns, the employee responsible for making the emergency procurement procurement shall make a written determination stating the basis and the selection for the particular supplier. So I'd likely see something in writing of why it was emergency, um, and why they chose, same way with J R Adele, we don't know exactly why or who all they called. Um, and then another thing I'd like to see in there is a summary of all emergency purchases shall be submitted for review by the city council at the earliest council meeting possible, if in excess of ten thousand dollars. Cause like on this, none of us would have known if we didn't reach out, um, to Jeremy.
Yeah, I mean, that's the disturbing part. No, we didn't, we didn't know anything was going on. We weren't keyed off to any of it, and maybe it isn't our business, but we, you know, the way I always looked at it was when, uh, the, the, we always give the city manager a five thousand dollar spending limit. And so, but then we doubled that here a while back, and this was way over that, so, you know, I just didn't understand where the the emergency had came in.
Mayor, were you saying that, uh, or someone was saying that it was a manhole cover in a street? It wasn't in a street, right?
It was in an improved, it was in an improved area.
No, but in an improved area?
Yeah.
Okay.
If I remember.
It wasn't in the ballpark outfield?
Um, the, the manhole might have been, but the, I don't know exactly where it was, but the, but the line where they tore up was actually in the improved area. Under, under concrete.
I think what they feared was it was going to collapse and it resulted in a huge backup all through the whole city.
And I think what they didn't realize, or wasn't told us, is that that has been sunken for at least four years. So it wasn't nothing new. But anyways, what I would like to see, um, to make a recor-
Just.
I would like to make a motion to, um, in our financial policies, add this, a written determination of the basis for emergency and for the purchase of selection of particular vendor or contractor shall be included with the purchase documentation. A summary of all emergency purchases shall be submitted for review by the city council at the earliest council meeting possible, in, if in excess of ten thousand dollars.
Would you be able to present that so that they can get that word for word?
Yeah.
Okay.
And do you want to use, I mean, that's, it's a great point you bring up, but do you want to do ten thousand or do you want to do five thousand? You still.
Well, I mean, ten thousand is what the city manager can approve anyways, so whether it's emergency or not, the city manager could approve.
I understand that, but, I mean, one of the things that I, that, you know, there may not be a point in time to talk about this, but the city, city manager's limit for years and years and years was five thousand dollars. And, and then we, we doubled it to ten thousand here a while back because of, we were worried about the COVID crisis.
I will just amend that to in excess of city manager's spending limit.
Mayor, can I ask a question? You brought up earlier the question about, uh, what is imminent?
Immediate.
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 Excuse me. Um, would, would you say that, uh, something that needs to be corrected, I think you said twenty-four hours, but would you not think that imminent could be forty-eight hours? I mean, I, I'd say one to two days, but you know, with your.
I was just going, basically, I looked up the definition of media dictionary, everything said twenty-four hours. Forty-eight hours is fine? Okay, we just need to come to an agreement, um.
If that's what it's, I, I like what's in the dictionary.
Yeah, and so.
Did you, did you look online or did you actually look in the dictionary? You got us encyclopedi-
You might ask Bob, see if there's a legal description of immediate as well.
Yeah, and I don't know if maybe we can.
We would have to have this reviewed by legal before it could be presented.
And I don't know if, if we want to put the definition of media in there, just for future reference, I don't know.
I think that would be really important, because it would clarify.
Yeah.
It would certainly help me, because then I would know.
I think if you leave it out, it just becomes a threat to public, oh, well, that could be over any timeframe, so immediate or urgent or whatever. I mean, if it's a flood or something where the city manager has to really act right, yeah, it, it covers them too.
You know, I think it, it should be self-explanatory. If, if it's immediate, someone's got to come in right now and do the work. I mean, that's what immediate is to me, not, hey, we have a problem, when can you start? Three and a half weeks. That's not immediate.
Exactly. You know, the downtown fire would be a great example. When, when the downtown fire happened, Mark, you were there.
Yes.
I was there, and that was an immediate. We had to know, what do we do? And we hired a contractor to come up and push the rest of those buildings down to where it was safe. That's an imme- that's an immediate danger. A sewer that's been backed up for quite some time is, we've got a lot of immediate dangers now. Some people would say Old Faithful would be an immediate danger, um, but we've let that go for twenty-some years, so.
And I think ninety-nine percent of the time, this is a purchase and not a bid, and so that's why it's probably tough, but.
Yeah, we, we've kind of applied this a couple of times. One of them had to do with South National, where we declared that a public or, or, or an emergency too, and then wound up getting bids for it, so that the group could sign in, so we just need to be careful about how we apply it.
So I guess my motion is to put that out for Bob's review.
Need a second on that?
Yeah, we need a second.
Sure.
Kevin Allen?
Yes.
Pete Allen?
Yes.
Randy Nichols?
Yes.
Josh Jones?
Yes. See, discussion of codes in reference having a bathroom and kitchen in residence. I don't think Bill's here, is he?
Bill, Bill's not here, but I, I'm here. And you ha- should have in your packet the definition, uh, thank you. So it's highlighted here in pink?
It's supposed to be the new packet?
No, it's in your other one.
Under three.
This is a test.
I sent an email, I don't know if you, Diane, you got it or Mark got it today. Um, I had a question on this, um, to build a garage next to your house.
Yes, when I sent the Sony Rex, I sent you.
Okay.
I emailed it to you. I emailed it to you.
Yes.
I think it was in Article twenty of the zoning regulations.
Were you planning on addressing that tonight too?
No, I think it kind of goes hand in hand.
Okay.
Because I didn't know what it said, if a dwelling must be, and I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to look at it. So I won't talk on it, waste any time.
I, I, I can read it if you'd like.
Yeah, go ahead, Mark, so the public can hear it.
No single accessory building in a residential district, that's R one, R two, R three. MHP, MHS, MU, CS. Shall occupy more than thirty percent, nor shall all such buildings collectively occupy more than forty percent. Of the required space. The caveat here is no accessory building. Shall be located closer than five feet to any lot line. Now garages shall not be constructed upon lots in residential zones, districts. Upon which no principal dwelling is located. The key word there is upon no principal dwelling is located.
So explain that to me a little deeper. If, if I have a, if I have a house. On the corner lot and there's. An empty lot in between me and another lot that I own. Can I build a garage on that other lot if I don't have the lot in between me?
Garages shall not be constructed upon lots in residential zones. Upon which no principal dwelling. So principal dwelling would be a place where you dwell and or a house is located. So if there's no house there, you can't put a garage there. That's twenty dash zero eight zero three.
All right, so back to this one.
Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I did. I just don't know if I like it or not.
Oh, yeah. Discussion of codes of having a bathroom, kitchen in residence. I mean, did Bill have any? Anything to?
No, we circled this here. So it indicates here in section R three oh six sanitation. So it has the definition of toilet facilities, kitchen facilities. Each dwelling unit shall be provided with a kitchen area. And every kitchen area shall be provided with a sink. Toilet facilities. Every dwelling. Unit shall be provided with a water closet, lavatory, and a bathtub or shower. So you can't just have a toilet and a sink. You have to have a bathtub and a shower. Sewage has to be disposed of, water supply fixtures. That's what it says here, section R three oh six sanitation. I told Bill I would read this for him. I, that's, yes.
All right. Does anyone have any questions on any of that? If not. We'll just move forward to discussion of Buck Run Community Center's safety fire lane. Is that what Jerry's here for?
So I, I spoke with the fire chief earlier. Who, by the way, is, is in class all week long in Kansas City and he's driving back and forth. So you should commend him for that. And my first conversation with him was around seven AM this morning. And he's still here. So. Chief Bruner, the question is in regards to the road next to Buck Run Community Center. So that, on the agenda, that's.
So on the agenda, that was. Thought at first to be a fire road, access road. I went and took a double. Take of that road and it is actually thirteen foot wide. And. I think two hundred and some odd feet. It's, it's not, it doesn't meet the specifications of a fire access road. That has to be twenty feet wide. And if you go more than a hundred and fifty foot long, you have to have a turnaround. So. It's basically just a, and I pulled up the plans from nineteen ninety and it says just a service access road.
Trash can?
Yeah, trash truck, yeah. Paved service road is what it says.
And that's typically why the road was tore up in the first place, am I correct?
Right.
Trash truck.
Just the way.
So, yeah, I mean, so, so what are you wanting to, what do you tell us then?
Well, at first I thought it was a. Fire access road. So there was some. Regulations that maybe we need to look at, but since this is a service road, I think just going back paved surface.
We, we are required by an audit that we receive to fix that because we have the public coming in and out of the facility on that side.
Can it be, can it be fixed with? With, we're always talking about saving money. Can that be fixed? Can we move our trash receptacle somewhere else? Can that be fixed with grass? And a sidewalk to save money?
Some of the other options, I mean, some of the other cases, if there was. An instance where we needed to get a fire truck there, maybe to. Go into the gym for a quick knockdown, maybe a small fire or something, we can still do that.
So, so let me throw another idea at you, Dave. Being we're talking about the city being able to haul gravel and, and things like that. I, I took part, I guess it was legal for me to take part in an old fort one time. I did a job for them. We built a surrounding road around that whole old fort. And we, what we did was we took the material down, took the dirt off of it. Got the vegetation off and then we come in with actually two inch lifts at that time with AB three. And then we came up to a, it was a neat plastic mat that went down. Yep, that honeycomb mat that went down. Then you put another layer of sand in it and then it was grass on top of it. So. I mean, I don't know if we need to go that extent, but I know that AB three compacted properly down through there might save us a lot of money. And if, and there again, if you leave the trash receptacle there, it's something that can be maintained from time to time as that trash truck pushes it out or what have you. We could go in there and blade it off and not have busted up concrete, not have busted up asphalt and so on. What's that? Yeah, yeah, at the old fort. It's not too shabby. I did okay.
So Dave, can you access, access this for fire safety? If you can get a truck in there if you had to.
Well, to, to actually have it labeled as a fire service has to be twenty foot wide.
I, I understand, but I'm, I'm asking the question.
If we had something that we didn't want to. You know, if there was something, a quick knockdown or, or something like that, we could.
You probably wouldn't take the last truck down there.
No, we won't do that.
Not in that section.
Most of our practices, we'll go to the front door anyway. And then, because we have a hydrant right there, so we'll stay off that side.
Sure, I would think that would be a pretty much a trap if you pulled a vehicle back in there when something was on fire.
Right. That's why I wanted to double check to look at the plans before we did anything. And it's, it's just a service access road. So, but it says paved service road.
Well, absolutely, but I'm just, I'm just looking at all the projects we have and that may be one that we might want to look into is. Getting in and getting out of there.
Right. And I know a lot of people. When they do different activities and stuff in that gym, they use that road to.
Bring their stuff in.
Equipment. So I mean, having a paved road, continue to pave road would probably wouldn't be a bad idea.
Sure.
Would, would the commission like me to get three different options and come back at the next meeting? One would be gravel, one would be asphalt, one would be concrete?
I like that.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Mark.
Good luck at school.
All right, next item, discussion of additional mowing contractor.
I have had a lot of conversation with Bill Downey. I'll discuss that later. Currently, we have seventy-nine lots that have not been mowed. We, we have had in excess of about two hundred. That have been requested to be mowed. So. No mowing has been conducted since July thirty-first. So nothing's been mowed August or September. Bill has. Phoned, left message and text messages as well as emailed the current mowing folks. So what I asked Bill was. Again, I, can we add somebody else to this so we have more than one mower right now to get things done between now and the end of mowing season? We still have lots that are in excess of two feet that have not been mowed. Or lots that were mowed that are, are above the standard. Which is eight inches? The maximum height is eight inches before you're notified. So I would like to add another mowing service. That would be Miller Mowing. We, I, again, I've met with and discussed this quite a bit with. Bill Downey Codes. And we have east and west sides. We have forty-six, I'm sorry. We have twenty-six on the east side and fifty-three on the west side that have not been mowed for a total of seventy-nine locations. I could divide it that way and then see if, if the current mower. Could mow the, the locations on the east side because there's twenty-six and give the new fifty-three, not, they're not new, but give the fifty-three on the west side. To the potential additional mower here. So that's what I'm requesting here. Permission. To add an additional mowing service to get our lots that are not mowed, mowed.
So you're saying as of today, no mowing's been done in August or September?
That is correct.
So Susan, you haven't received no bills from Code Department? And we're a hundred percent sure Lyle does not have or Norm or Bill has.
Oh, there was one right in yesterday, I'm being told.
One bill?
One bill. I didn't know when it, I just, I think we took it back to Janet.
So I haven't seen that yet.
I, I wasn't aware of that.
Are we basing the no mowing off not receiving no bills or actually not being, I'm just saying last time it was brought to us, they gave us a list. I drove and checked them. Half of them were already mowed.
Hey, so. If I call you as a business person.
Yep.
You don't reply to my phone calls, you don't reply to my text messages, you don't reply to my emails, you're not wanting to do this. I'm telling you as my position as a business person.
You called these people?
I have not. Bill Downey has personally.
And Bill Downing told you he hadn't received a bill from them?
No, he, no, what I want to clearly reiterate, he has not received a return phone call, a return text message, or a return email.
And did you reach out to each of the other contractors that put in a bid?
I, I didn't ask anybody to give a bid. I wanted to go to the next lowest bidder.
I know you said splitting it up. So I didn't know if you meant split it up over the next two or three people to bid or?
The next lowest bidder was Miller. I just wanted to go to the next person in line. I don't know if I need to have this bid out.
No, you, I don't, I don't know if you, I knew you said you wanted it split up. So I didn't know if you meant split up over the next two or three people to bid or not. That's why I didn't know.
One of the things that, that I'm struggling with in the position of city manager is not understanding all the rules, regulations, and laws. And so as a business person, I would have went ahead and ordered this so we could get it done.
It, yeah, and it is different.
It's not the same. And so I understand. And so that's why I'm asking for permission to go to the next lowest bidder. And, and I, I'm not signing a contract. I, I don't even think there's a signed contract with the other person.
I just want to make sure you're right. Have you talked to Bob at all? Do we have to cancel that other contract first?
We're not canceling them. We're adding to them. So it's not a canceling of a contract. They want to start mowing again, get with it.
I mean, that, that would be my only concern was if, if I'm, if I'm the contractor. Contractor number one. And I know our, our employee is saying. You know, that they're not returning calls and things like that. But if I'm, if, if we haven't talked to the contractor, I mean, I would say. And I don't know whether we need to try to reach out to them again or what have you, but I'm just saying if I'm that contractor and I have a contract and all of a sudden I see somebody else doing my business. And that may be false information. I'm, I'm upset now, you know? I'm not saying that that is what's going on, but I'm just saying that would be me if. If I was contractor and I mean, if this is an emergency, I mean, again, I don't want to know, the word emergency comes up tonight quite a bit.
It's not an emergency.
Right?
It's highly needed.
Right, right.
That's not an emergency. So I agree.
Yeah, I mean, I would think if you guys think it's needed, I just want to make sure we're all covered under the contract we signed with them. I can't remember what the contract said.
There is no contract. They just went off the, the bid.
Just a bid. So isn't the bid, isn't that a binding contract when you take a bid on something? I mean. Excuse me?
The contract, the bid that. They bid off of is very explicit on what is needed.
So if you feel comfortable that we're not breaking the rules or laws, I'd say do what you think needs to be done.
I, I can review this with our legal counsel. Because I wanted to clarify, I am not a lawyer. So therefore, I need to seek legal guidance and, and that's a good point. If, I will do that. And my, yes, my objective is to get things done. And sometimes I failed in trying to do that too quickly.
When is Doug, if you don't mind, since you're here, when's usually the last day for mowing generally?
I'm hoping for it in October.
October. And you're good with, you're good with, I know we talked before, you're good with taking pictures before and then after and turning them in and everything? Timestamp and date stamp? Yeah, I mean, I think, I think if we don't, if we don't make you and it was in the other one, then I think legally we'll be in trouble.
Yeah, the, the other one would take a picture and send that to us. So we know that it was mowed and it, it shows, you know.
I think they take before and after pictures and then send them to Bill. I just want to make sure.
They did. Yeah, they were required to take the before and after because the situation came up when. Our employees were saying that they weren't doing their job correctly. So we wanted to make sure and hold them accountable. And it's a great idea. I mean, it should have been done for years and years. But with cell phones now, it's so easy. So if you have a smartphone. That's right. And if you're smart.
So you don't really, I mean, I guess if it's something you think you can do without, then we don't really need a motion, so.
I will check with legal counsel and I will inform all of you. As quickly as I can do this to make sure we do it. And I will use Miller Mowing. Okay?
All right, discussion of employee benefits program. Waited all day for this.
Oh, let's skip it.
Brett, I will say Brett, I appreciate you staying for the meeting. I know that they get long sometimes.
He's been staying for all the meetings. That's pretty, that's a good deal.
All right, good evening. You should have this in your packet, I would say. Did you put it in there? I'll go through it briefly anyway and.
Six.
It's gonna be right after the last one.
Right after the last one.
So. What we call this is Employee Benefit Program. Basically, we feel giving back to our. Members is very important, especially when we are trying to retain our members. Plus getting new recruits in to become longstanding members. So we'd like to propose to you all to create the employee benefit program to allow our members to enjoy the city amenities without the cost. The employee would be responsible paying a fringe benefits tax on the amenities they participate in at the end of the year. So the program would include the following amenities. Free aquatic family pass.
Hey Brett.
Yes.
Could you tell me what you meant by fringe benefit? Deal, package?
We have to pay a tax on these items.
Yeah, it's not the city, it's IRS. Yeah, so it's not the city, it's something IRS. Anytime you receive.
Fringe benefits.
Anything, yeah, anything in value, value, yeah, you have to pay taxes on it.
So they'd only pay that on what they sign up for. So if I didn't sign up for the. Aquatic center, I wouldn't have to pay that.
So you're saying the employee will have to pay the tax?
At the end of the year. So go back to free aquatic center, free golf membership, free camping at Gun Park, water lake. Free Buck Run Fitness Center pass and free Gun Park Shelter House rental. We'll develop a signup program so we can keep track of who actually uses what, who wants to participate in this. If they don't want to participate. It was offered and we just go on from there. So that is what we want to propose. We feel that this is a very good benefit. You know, we want to show our members we care and show people out there that, hey, city of Fort Scott's got a lot of things going for them and to. Share that with them. So I want to bring that to propose. If you have any questions, please feel free.
I think it's a clear idea, but I, I think you got to define who family is.
Okay.
Be sure that there's no confusion.
Yeah, that was my only concern. I don't, I meant to call Chassie or Steve, but how is it defined already in memberships? Does anyone know?
We get up, you can get up to four people on a family membership and then you have to pay, then you have to pay, yeah.
Wouldn't it just be clarified as immediate family?
I think, because we already have that.
Yeah, we already have that in the aquatic center.
So this is, and so they should base the same rules as the other family pass.
Yes, and the same as golf.
Brett, the only thing that I, I, I looked through this and the only thing that I had, and I came in early with the meeting, but we didn't get far enough in this to discuss this and I wanted to come visit with you beforehand, but. When we say, I'm okay with the, the aquatic center because I think that's a great thing. And, and I'm okay with the, I seen on the golf, you said that that does not include a cart rental.
Right.
So they'll start to pay for a cart rental. And I like that part. And it said a, a complete membership. So the whole family gets a membership to the golf course?
It would be a family plan. It'd be a family membership.
And that's, that's, then that would, what's a family membership cost?
Six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Yep, six twenty-five. I was a little sketch on that as far as thinking. A, a golf membership for the whole family, but we can talk about that. But the one thing that I did think about was the shelter house. I didn't mind giving. I didn't mind giving them some shelter house, but I'm just thinking to myself, if we have, what do we have as far as employees in the City of Fort Scott? A hundred?
Yeah.
So we have roughly a hundred people. And if I'm a city employee, I may want to take that shelter house, you know, once a month. I may want that once a month. I just want to make sure that that's not going to cut citizens out when you say, hey, we'd like to rent the shelter house on the Fourth of July. Well, we're sorry, we're already giving it away, and give, you know, I, I just don't want.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point. The, the pool never, I mean, you're never at capacity hardly, the golf, you're not at capacity camping, but the shelter houses do reach capacity. And so, I don't know if we can tweak that somehow, or maybe a nominal fee.
I thought, I thought maybe one shelter house rental per year, or, you know, something like that, because I don't think that you want to rent it every month anyway, but I think that would be a way to control it where it's not so far out of, out of control, to where I say, you know what, we get it free, we might as well get it every weekend and have a hoedown out there.
I think once per year.
No, that's fair. Once per year is fine. Yeah, that's fair.
Yeah, but other than that, I think it's, you know, it's something that's been done.
Yeah, the free golf membership would attract.
Yeah, there's something should have been done a long time ago. It's something that doesn't really cost us nothing to utilize, but it's very beneficial to the employees.
And for those that don't play a lot of golf, or don't have a family, I, I think it's really great to single, you know, if you just want to go out and play golf three times a year, well then, that's really nice benefit also, because I'm sure there's people going, even if I did the family, we're only going to go out once.
Right.
You know, why, why?
Right, typically, it's not like all hundred employees are going to take advantage of that, because there's going to be a lot of people that don't play golf, but, but again, you know, maybe you say Jerry don't play golf, but he said, you know what, now that it's free, I'll go out there, bat him around a little golf.
Are you going to the,
I like it.
The tax, again, how would you call that?
French, uh,
They'll have to, we'll have a signup sheet, and they'll have to complete that form.
For the individual, the daily?
And then, yep, and then at the end of the year, we'll do our, our tax benefit.
Is that going to having the daily rate, is that, you think that will cause a lot more on your guys' plate?
Yes.
So will that be something you'll keep tabs on when they, when, when an employee comes into play, will they still keep tab on it?
It'd be better if we just take that out.
That's what I was saying, if it's going to cost a lot of accounting work, if we can just take out.
Whatever makes it easier on that.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, there, there aren't people that don't golf that much, might want to go golf, so I want to offer it to them, but.
Yeah, because otherwise, they're going to get taxed at a higher rate if they only golf a couple of times, yeah.
But I don't want to cause a bunch of extra work.
Make the employee fill out the form. Don't make the employee. So when they're there
Right.
to go play golf, it was, if it was, let's say I played, Mark, fill out this form, and then they put it in the box.
Yeah, I was more talking about the end of the year, figuring out the accounting side of it. In the, in the system payroll, okay, now, ex-employee went fifteen times, so I got to figure, go through papers, how many times a day you go golfing, fifteen times. I gotta figure out daily rate, and now, and so if it's membership.
That'll be on the form. Daily rate will be on the form.
I just talked about inputting it into the computer, since it's not just as easy as.
But you're only going to do it one time, and that would be in the end of November or the first month, first payroll period in December. You're not going to do this every month. You don't need to.
So this only includes employees there. What about city commissioners?
Uh, no.
No?
No.
Well, we wouldn't want to get away with anything.
Make sure.
Making that.
Your dollar a day isn't, or dollar a year?
Is it an emergency or not? No?
Besides the way you play golf, you don't want to play more than once a year.
Yeah, that's right.
So I would request that we start this, um, come January one, just because of all the proration that would have to happen here for this year.
There goes my one round of golf.
Yeah.
Please.
You didn't qualify for that either?
Yeah.
So I would make the motion to accept this January one. Um, the only change is, uh, one shelter house rental per year.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Randy Nichols?
Yes.
Kevin Allen?
Yes.
Pete Allen?
Yes.
Josh Jones?
Yes.
And I would, I would just say, I highly suggest that the employees get out and take, take advantage of that. That's, that's a great incentive. That's huge. Good job, Brad.
All right, G, discussion of infrastructure program?
Yeah, um, at the last meeting, uh, Dr. Nichols had asked me, um, about putting together what it would take to possibly do a bond. And so, um, Josh had also come in during, during the week and asked about it, and so we just kind of sat down and talked about all the projects we have going on. And so, I just have listed out the projects, um, potentially what we could, what we could handle with the fund, um, as far as debt service, and it would allow you to, um, reduce some costs on mobilization. Uh, maybe you have one contractor come in and, um, do it in one year, and then you pay, pay for it over a series of years. So, um, stormwater, wastewater, water projects, and then the street infrastructure. And the street infrastructure is a little bit, that I want to spend a little bit of time on, because the, um, the Street Advisory Board had recommended certain projects that I think you accepted. Um, and then there was also a five-year plan that was produced, and so at some point, there probably needs to be some clarification of those projects. Um, when we're doing infrastructure projects or bonding for, uh, street improvements, they have to be main trafficways. So that would be something that you would need to, um, consider as well if you're going to bond more than six hundred thousand. So, that's, this is what was asked of me, and so I gave you some options, and these numbers can change, however, it just gives you some ideas of, of what it would cost.
Thank you. Couple of questions. Uh, so, to, to do this effectively, we'd really have to buy into a five-year, five-year strategic plan, or ten-year strategic plan, what, what we're going to do, and then follow through that if you're going to borrow in order to finance those projects, is that?
That is correct. Especially on the streets, you're going to have to buy into a plan. Because you're going to have to name the streets, you're going to have to name what your, what your project entails, yes.
Get it engineered and move forward, but, I mean.
It doesn't necessarily have to be engineered.
Just, just finance it?
Yeah, mm-hmm. You just, you just, you just, you, yeah.
Do that, we need some engineering, so.
Well, I think you would need, um, cost estimates, so,
Yeah.
that's what you would need.
Okay, and, and, and the, when you finance like this, it, it, does it leave us with residual, uh, for some wiggle room or other projects that come up, so that, that would be budgeted in here?
Yes.
Okay, then, um, a, a couple of other questions. We're basing this on our current revenue lines.
Yes.
So, uh, if, and, and does that include the, uh, biodiesel or bio?
ADM?
ADM?
Yes.
It does, and it also includes gas tax. So, if there's a large move in terms of electric vehicles or something, and we, could, could we be caught in that kind of thing?
It's not based on, um, the amount of gas that's sold. It's based on our population.
But the revenue has to come from somewhere in the state.
I agree, but that would be at the state level, so for, for, but how the statute is written is, it's based on, um, we will get an allotment based on population.
An allotment of plot, though.
I think it's, I could be wrong, but it's statewide gasoline sales.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, and so, so again, I'm way, way out on a limb here, but there is a big move to, to reduce the amount of gasoline sales going on, so as we look at long-term financing, five, ten, five, ten, twenty years, I think we got to have to think about that.
This isn't using any of those, those dollars, though. This is just the sales tax dollars that we, we were talking about for improvements.
Yeah, and I think we're going to do this.
Local sales tax is also impacted by the success of our,
Yes.
gas stations and, and, and convenience stores.
Yes.
So, so just, I'm just throwing it out there just as a thought process. Good, this is great. Thank you very much.
I'd say, I mean, the, the street is the biggest one, because we've, the engineer has identified stormwater, um, wastewater, and water projects that need done. The main one would be street infrastructure developing. The other ones, basically, I mean, there's enough for a five-year plan already. So I think the street's the only one that really needs, dove into.
And, and the only thing that I would say, if, if we plan to do something like this, and, and it doesn't have to happen this year, but, um, Cooper Street's one that's kind of been tabled. But if you wanted to, uh, to look at this, we, we could do bonds by the end of the year so that you could do Cooper Street. There's enough time still to be able to do that, but we would need to designate it as a main trafficway. So there's some steps that we would have to take to get, to get to that point.
And if we do, do this, um, we have cost estimates for a lot of it, so I'd like to see the bonds just go out for the cost estimates. I'm sure a little bit overage, then, the resolution state, anything over that would go back to the bond payment and not to the general fund.
I think the statute defines that for you.
Okay, I think there, I read one, one of them does, I think one of them allowed it to go for, um, servicing over the years for.
Well, I would love to see us continue to move forward with this, and go ahead, I mean, I'd like to see if this commission could be that we set this in motion and then actually have a concrete plan to do, so I, I don't know how we move forward with it, Mark, or Josh?
Yeah, I don't know what's the next step of it. Some, I mean, what it does is, it locks in low rates now. I don't know what rates are, under two percent. The cost of doing business usually goes up two percent each year. And then you also get bulk pricing. When you bid out a three million dollar worth, usually you'll save, you know, money instead of doing it out three hundred thousand over ten years, and so.
Yeah, it doesn't look like we're going to get Cooper Street down without financing.
Right. So we could, we could work on it for the next few months to define, get our, get our projects really defined. Um, but the more we wait, you know, I, I, we want to take advantage of the interest rate, so maybe we have a work session that really kind of talks to these projects, and I'll try and get more information from, or better cost estimates from our engineers on some of these projects. I know they're working on currently, so like the stormwater projects. Right now, we're waiting on, um, some contracts from them.
Yeah, the fact, the, is there, I don't know the timeline, the engineer could do that if he knows it's something we want to go, I mean, I would like prove to go out for a bid in January. As far as the bonding timeline, is that something that's doable?
Uh, yeah, a, and, and honestly, um, we should be bidding out our projects in early spring
Right.
so that we can have them ready to be let in the, in the summer time.
I would love to see this be done by late January.
Yeah, so we don't miss another.
Miss another opportunity.
Another season.
So, um, we meet with our engineers this week. Um, we have our weekly meeting with them, so I'll, Mark and I can sit down and go through these projects with them, and get some, um, more defined dates that they can have information to us. And then, uh, maybe we can set up a work session to talk through the streets, um, or we could invite the Street Advisory Board. I don't know how you guys want to handle that, the streets part of it.
Great to have a representative from them, or a couple of them.
Because one of their projects is relaying bricks from six, on Main Street from six, clear down to Scoobits.
I'd say if we get one of those there for the work session, and the engineer, and really just hash out, you know, and get it done, so.
Okay.
All right. Discussion of sale of lake properties.
So commissioners, there was a, let me back up. Uh, last week, I made the decision to try to go forward with the sale of the lake properties. And, so that, if you, I don't think there's anything in there at this point, but there, there is seven properties at the north end and two properties at the south end. The seven properties at the north end have been staked out, so they've been surveyed and staked out. The two properties at the south end have been surveyed, but they haven't been staked out. And I have, uh, so, um, I, in my desire to want to expedite it, I went ahead and explained to each one of the, we had a meeting here with the real estate folks? Real estate, the, um,
Realtors?
Realtors, thank you. And, uh, and, and explained to them what the four lots were, and, and then, so anyhow, I, I explained that to them. Then, then I told them, a commissioner called me with a concern in regards to, that was not the, the desires, the wishes, or what we voted on. We talked about the two south lots and the two south at the north end. So remember, there's seven lots on the north end, starting from south north. So, what I did was, I, I started not with the south south, the two lots, I started at the north end with the south four lots. So, the concern is that, uh, I didn't have permission to do that. The intentions of the commission was to go ahead with the two at the south and the two at the north. So I'm bringing that up now to ask you to make a determination how you want to proceed. I've already told each one of the Realtors to pause until after this meeting where, uh, a decision is made. And so.
So I would say we'll continue with the two south, and then the two south of the north, even without it being surveyed. We can go ahead and list it, and sell and survey is done all the time. And then, um, maybe the seller wouldn't be final until the contingent of the survey, so no reason why we can't go out and market it and put it, um, out for sale.
Okay, but we have two lots that are not clearly identified yet?
They're not surveyed. They're identified, but not surveyed.
So, how, so Realtor is going to be able to sell those without the final survey?
It's done all the time, yeah.
Yeah, I bought a ton of properties.
Done all the time, but is that actually okay?
I bought.
Well, that's what I mean, it's done, it's done through Security First is a reputable company, and they do it all the time with, the sale won't be final, you can sell it. I mean, it's, it's, survey can be done after, it's not all the time.
You guys are land people, but I'm curious what difference it makes if we sell those two, or if we sell the four at the south end of the seven. Why, why, why is it so important we include those?
I can answer that.
Two south ones.
And, uh, I'll just be open and honest, that was Mark and I that had the conversation, because I have attended every lake meeting, lake committee meeting. They build a subcommittee. They talked about which lots to sell, and it was their intentions, or their desires as well as mine, that this was the smartest way to sell the lots, because they were the unused lots that the city owned that had gazebos on them. They were deteriorating as it is. Um, you, you know, like we said before, if the codes were out in that area, we would, the City of Fort Scott would own the worst properties around on that lake. So we decided that this would be a good way to get rid of those and, and sell them and move forward. We didn't, and we, and, and as we had met later, we said, while the survey team was there, to go ahead and survey out, what was it, six more lots, four more lots, whatever it was, to the, to the north of the two north lots that would sell, and that's why the additional lots have been surveyed. Are you with me?
So originally, they were only going to survey two at the north?
Right.
Two at the north and two at the south.
Gotcha, okay.
And then, and then we made the decision to go ahead while Ag was there, and to go ahead and survey out four more additional lots for future sale, if we decided at that point in time to sell more. It was kind of a testing phase, and we were going to take that, and we wanted the money, put it in the lake fund. I think we all recall the discussions. And Mark, you weren't here, you weren't privy to a lot of these discussions since we've been here, so that's why I wanted to call and explain to you how adamant, you know, I was, as well as the committee, that, that this was the way we were going to do it. And the difference is, you know, what's a mean, what's, I, I guess that your question was, Commissioner Nichols, what does it matter if we sell those four lots or the other four lots, right?
Right.
So, so in a, in a real estate world, uh, what I'm thinking is, if I have, if, if I have, if I'm going to sell something desirable, if we sell those two lots on the north side where that gazebo is, and they come in and they build two nice homes on it, two, let's say, million-dollar homes on that lot, which is very possible. You know, half million, a million dollar homes, they're sitting all over Fort Scott Lake right now. That lot onto the north is going to become more desirable at that point, in my opinion, to own. So, you know, it could, it could backfire, and you could say, well, they built a tiny home on it, so now it's going to bring less money. But, that was the reason, it was a testing ground, and those four lots were the ones to be sold. So that's, that's where we were at on it, and that's where I'd like to stick, and as, as, uh, the mayor stated, you know, I, as well as a lot of people, have bought a lot of. Yep, excuse me. I've done that before, Diane. That's called Facebook, but anyway.
Has he's been, so, are you saying these haven't been surveyed at all, or just not staked?
Oh, no, they've been surveyed, because I, I have here in front of me the survey at the south.
So they've been surveyed, just not staked?
Yes, yeah. This is the, the diagram of the south, this is the diagram of the north.
So, so the estimate, the estimated value of the lots, basically across the border, is the same, or, or are you estimating these lots at the south to be a lot more valuable?
The intention was at the last meeting, when, I hate to go on for an hour about lake lots, but
I don't want to either.
The intention of the last meeting was to sell the two south and the two south there. So that's what, I don't know if you, we actually put that in motion, so I don't know if you need that in motion or not, to make it clear?
Well, I've heard clearly tonight, tonight what you want, so I'll make that happen. I was just trying to expedite it.
No, I appreciate it.
That's great.
Yeah.
And, and, but, no. I, I know what you're saying, Randy, because, and, and just because the lake advisory recommended it, I mean, we don't have to go with those.
I think part of the problem was our, the real estate agents came in and said, we can't clearly show somebody where the, where the property lines are.
Which.
And that was, that was a concern of theirs.
And I would be, two of them have done that for me, have sold a property that's not been staked, so I would be shocked if they can't, so.
Well, and the other thing is, do we have a clarification as to why those weren't marked in the first place?
Yes. So, uh, Ag Engineering has indicated that their GPS unit does not get a clear signal down there. And they've been out there multiple times, at least twice. And, and, yeah, I'm looking at. And, and they, yeah, I'm looking at Diane because I also have another, we received a call back from them today to follow up again. But their, their device will not get a clear satellite signal. It uses GPS global positioning satellite to determine the exact location.
How did we do that before we had GPS?
Uh, so um, I wish Jackson was here. They, 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 they did it um, through the survey machine and.
Can we still do that? I mean, I'm, I'm just wondering because in my world, uh, you know, we had transits back in the day that we looked through, come up with levels. Now we have lasers. But if, if my laser broke down, the batteries went dead, I could still go back to my old fashioned transit and pull that up. I mean, is that something we could go ahead and request that they do? Just go the old fashioned way before the trees? I mean, if we're waiting on trees, I don't.
So they said that they, they hope to get to it by the end of next week. But, we can ask them if they still have another.
I'm not telling them how to do their job, but I just, that was.
So you don't need it in motion, we're good to go?
Nope, 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 nope. I'm going to text the Realtors right now.
The only thing I, I would ask is, is do you want us to redraw?
My, you know, and I will say. Shift. Oh, I see what you're saying. The, the only thing that I had, you know, and, and of course, like, I'm like Josh, I don't want to talk about this. We rehash this a thousand times and, and even everybody's tired of it, I suppose. But I, I, in, in the essence of transparency, which we've had several discussions tonight about how transparency hasn't evolved in the right way. People didn't know this and people didn't know that. So in the essence of transparency, I was hoping to have, and it's like I, I had one of the Realtors, I, I told two of the Realtors that I'd seen, they're going to be drawn Friday at three o'clock because that's what I was told, you know, we're probably going to draw Friday at three o'clock and it didn't, didn't get drawn. And then later we drew. And, and, and I'm not, no, nobody is ever going to think that anybody here, well, I suppose they think that anybody can do something wrong. But I, in the essence of fairness, should we redraw in public or give them a time? It's kind of like a, in my opinion, it's kind of like a bid opening. We give the, uh, the contractor an opportunity to come in here while the builds, bids are being opened to make sure it's all legal and, and, and if they, if they choose to be here, they're here. If they choose not to be here, they don't come. So I mean, I wonder if the, in the essence of transparency, we redraw in front of them and say you have the opportunity to be here at, at this date and this time tomorrow at noon, whatever you pick, Mark. I mean, it, this is your, I mean, I'll leave it up to.
I would like the commission, if you'd like me to redraw, tell me that just like this. I'm happy making that change. We can.
What's your guys' thought?
I'm good either way. I, I trust you, Mark.
But you asked the Realtors.
Well, that's not a Realtor choice, I think at this point in time. I think that's a, uh, I think it's the commission's choice.
But that's, that's my opinion.
And I, I believe you're right, Mark. I believe it is the commission's choice. If we ask the Realtors' opinion, I mean, this, this is what we're here is to set policies and procedures. So, and I would like to, I, I, I don't want to start a whole new realm of this deal, but I think it's very open and honest to say this has been such a confusing thing. It's went through several hands. It's not your fault, Mark. It's not Jeremy's fault. It's not anybody's fault, but we're here now. So maybe we should redraw.
Yeah, I mean, if that's what you think, I would just call each Realtor, send the Realtor a rep over, draw him from, it's all good.
You got a handle, Mark.
Okay. I, I clearly understand we're going to redraw them and get the Realtors here and then we will all, the same thing we did last time will number one through four. And uh, so whoever gets number one gets the south lot going, working way north, okay?
Perfect. Commissioners reporting comments.
Wait, 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 wait. You, you forgot that someone was added to the bottom of number fourteen. Bottom of fourteen would be me. That's okay. So um, I, I wanted to.
You're right. I looked down.
It's okay.
If you look down, there's another fourteen down there.
There is.
So I looked at the other fourteen.
Well, I can go.
No, no, you're good. You can go now.
Okay, real quickly.
That's how I used to count. Thirteen, fourteen, fourteen.
Sorry, wrong fourteen. Go ahead, Mark.
So uh, your city manager has been out working with Public Works, working with them to the extent that I've uh, uh, have a rake, a shovel and a broom and, and I have been assisting in locations. Uh, I have actually raked and shoveled and swept off the driveway at wall and the alley. Uh, moved around some of the debris that's in the alley. Uh, I have uh, filled potholes. Uh, because as I'm driving around town and doing other things as well as visiting with Public Works or visiting with uh, codes or parks department, uh, or water, if I see a hole, I am going to put rock in it. Uh, there's no reason why I should not be doing that. So um, I've spent lots of time with codes enforcement. I've spent time with the parks department. I've spent the time with Public Works. Um, I'm going to establish a new daily activity sheet that I would like the folks in charge so that I know who's working where. Pretty simple.
We tried that a few months ago.
Okay, wasn't aware of that. Why did it fail?
Say it again.
The daily activity sheet.
Yeah, we ask uh.
We asked Jeremy to put, we put, well, asked putting something together. Uh, we used one Nevada, the Public Works Nevada sent me.
Didn't know that. Can you send that to me please?
You should have them for a few days. Bill Lemke has.
Bill was filling them out, yeah.
Bill was in charge at the time.
Okay.
So, but it's, it's great because we were talking about the other day how we haven't, I don't think they've been turning them in.
Now, we had, uh, and I think it's, yeah, and I think it's a great concept, Mark, because, you know, and again, between business, you know, private business and, and, you know, you expect your, you know, maybe in, in your business you were running, you knew they were going to make McNuggets and hamburgers. You knew what they were doing. But like in my business, when they come in at the end of the day, they turn in a time sheet saying, here's what I accomplished today, these five things. Because if I don't have that, I can't bail out. So I need to know, they have to be accountable for their time every day. So we thought it would be a good thing and a prideful thing to say, look what I got done today. This is what we did Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And, you know, jot down from ten to twelve, whatever.
Well, what I'm asking for though is at the beginning of the day. So you, you need to inspect what you expect. And so I'm not out there, I'm not going to be out there telling them what to do. I want to know what they're doing, where they're doing it, when they're doing it. So I can be a visible observant for the commission.
Absolutely. That's what we were talking about. We get questions from citizens, hey, what are they doing this week? Say, Mark, what's on the list, you know, and this is what they're doing. So now I think it's wonderful.
Well, you, you know, I, I believe in certain business practices. They're applicable to any business. So lead by example, do the right thing, help where you need to help. You're, no one's too good to do any job. And that's why I uh, requested from you this salary because I asked to be paid whatever the lease person in the city makes. I'm no better than anybody else. I'm here to help, to serve the people that work here and help to serve the community and work with the commissioners. And we need to have that, that attitude, but I also have a do it now, fix it now attitude, which can get me in trouble. But, but that being said, I want to assist the Jessies and the Bill Lemkes. I'm not there to say, why aren't you doing your job? I'm there to say, how can I help you?
Mark, and that being said, that, and we love that attitude and that's why we, we love having you aboard. But you know, and, and we believe that as commissioners too, Pete spent, he about killed himself on the tennis courts up there, you know, volunteering because he's a do it now. You know, if somebody's not doing it, he's going to do it. He's done that. He's helped out in multiple places as well as Josh with, with, you know, so many things with the parks and, and so on and as well as myself. I've donated my equipment, my time, all kinds of things to help the thing keep going. So we appreciate what you're doing with your gravel and sweeping and everything.
Not my gravel. I'm getting it from the city.
Well, I guarantee you, I'm not bringing that gravel.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I can only lift so much. So uh, my, that uh, eighty thousand pound automatic lifter that I installed on my truck, you'll be getting that bill next week. Well, maybe just two thousand pounds, but anyhow. So I, I, I want you to know I'm out there working for us, the city and the community, and I want to do the right thing. And I think codes is moving in the right direction. Uh, both Lyle and uh, Norm have already started their training. And so um, I believe it's important to work with the department leaders, whoever they are. So that's an important meeting we have each week here. That would conclude my report.
All right, commissioners reporting comments. Pete?
Well, speaking of codes, uh, Mark, I, I would like a report on the chop house. I asked for that to be on, on the last uh, uh, meeting, but it never got on the agenda.
I had it as my report, but I never got the report last meeting because we ended up leaving. And I'm sorry, I was going to make that report last time. Would you like me to report on that now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for reminding me. So I want to let you know that uh, in addition to the chop house being expected, every location in the downtown historic district has been visited by codes with the exception of one building and one owner. That owner has not given us permission to enter the building. But all other buildings have been inspected and visited. The majority of all owners were very appreciative of our visit. Now, specifically to the chop house, both the fire chief and the deputy fire chief were given permission to enter into the building by Mrs. Cuplin. They spent some time in there. They reported that the building was in satisfactory, acceptable condition to them. We went above that. We went to our engineers and asked our engineers to come in and look at it. And so what they indicated is that there is no imminent danger, no realistic danger of the roof collapsing. The main structure, the main roof, which they actually said, oddly enough, I've never heard of this before, but the roof is corrugated? I don't know. I don't know how else to describe that.
I can see if it's corrugated running east and west, but it wouldn't be corrugated, I wouldn't believe.
I, I, I'm saying corrugated. That's not the word that you. It has a pitch, maybe? Yeah, that's the way it was constructed.
Possibly like a dome, like a quantity.
I wasn't in there. Yeah, I haven't seen. We made sure that they, they had to have safety gear because of the potential of what's, what, you know, when they left, they, they left the grease in the fryer and meat on the grill. So.
So they, okay, so just to uh, reiterate, they said there's no imminent danger.
Correct.
But did they say the roof had collapsed? And I mean, and not, not collapsed, but there was holes in the roof and raining through.
That was the false ceiling. So what they did was when they were able to look at the rear, the rear, there's two ceilings. I'm sorry, two roofs. So the rear, the rear portion does have uh, two tiny, two small holes. I'm not going to say tiny. I have asked Bill Downey to contact Mrs. Cuplin and ask her for permission to place tarps on that roof. Because otherwise moisture or water will continue to get in there. If that can, if that, she will grant, if she will grant us that permission and she does not want to own the building anymore, she would love to sell it. Rob uh, Hamilton may have a buyer for it.
What about Rob Harrington?
Yeah, Ham, yeah.
Hamilton trying to get his job?
Yeah, you know, uh. Yeah, I'm trying to think of the guy. His name is Hamilton. It's a movie star, but he didn't come here to do that. Rob Harrington did it. Thank you. Thank you for correcting me. George, George, yeah. George Hamilton was not in town and did not do that. So um, I can ask the engineer if you want me to get something further in writing from him. Uh, you know, they always give you that clause at the very end, which, which is they're not going to guarantee or promise. But uh, we, we all, the fire chief, the deputy fire chief, codes and myself, after all those conversations felt better. Now, does that mean it's not going to collapse? To me, it means there is no imminent danger of that building collapsing. Now, if they continue to not, uh, if, if we are prevented from covering the rear roof, then there could be a problem on the rear of the place. So that's why I've asked him to get ahold of Mrs. Cuplin to ask for permission to put the tarp up there to uh, prevent that from happening. At the very least, this may be a property that could go into the land bank. Uh, there is currently about sixteen thousand dollars in back taxes on this property. So now it could be sold for twenty thousand dollars. But Mrs. Cuplin indicated that she wished to no longer be the property owner.
Is the, is the building uh, habitable?
In its current condition, no. When, when you say habitable, I, by the way, in all fair disclosure, I looked at this building uh, seven years ago for the purpose of operating a restaurant in and I immediately walked away from it uh, at that time.
It's a lot worse.
Yeah, and it, it's, I mean, nothing's been touched in there. So you have the rot of the equipment that's in there. You have the, the wood.
I just wonder if, and, and I'm not an attorney, but I remember Bob stopping us last time when we were talking about the condition of the building for the purpose of if I was the owner and you're, and we're talking too much about it. So I think probably, I think it's probably, I hate to be the smart one out of the group, but I know.
So no, no immediate danger.
I don't want to see you get trouble.
No, that's just doing the right thing. Thank you.
You bet.
Can't tell you.
Can't tell you. Ancient Chinese secret.
I'm sorry.
So are we following proper procedure?
Yes, yes.
As far as codes are required?
Yes.
And, and that procedure is to do nothing? Uh, except try to patch a couple holes?
Oh, I see what you're saying. So um, well, to your point, I, I, I would say no. We, we need to go ahead and issue codes violations.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
I think that's a good idea.
Are you asking also if it's a dangerous structure that needs to be condemned?
It's not a dangerous structure that needs to be condemned. But, but I agree, issue codes violations. Thank you. Well, I, me, yeah, yeah, yeah. I think we.
Yeah, I'll probably leave it at that.
Anything else, Pete?
That's all.
Okay. No, I'm glad you reminded me and I'm sorry that I didn't put it on tonight's agenda.
Randy?
Okay.
You know, I'll second, I mentioned Tim. I, I think Marcia's a, a big loss for the community. She knew everybody, she took care of everybody and uh, makes me sad. So, so the best to her family.
Kevin?
Yeah, I mean, we've all lived here our whole lives and, and uh, well, for the most part, I think everybody has. But um, Marcia was a, a huge part of the community. She was everybody's friend. She probably, you know, left this place without any enemies that I would know of. And I've seen a lot of great tributes to her on, on Facebook, talking about her setting up the ballparks and getting sandwiches for anybody, even if they didn't have any money. She made sure, and I remember that as school kids, you know, even if the kids didn't bring their five dollars or six dollars for sporting events, it didn't matter to Marcia. She still made sure them kids had their brown bag lunch to go, whether she got paid for it or not. So she is truly going to be missed and you know, we can just hope that they're going to be able to, the family is to continue the, the deli the way it always has been. Um, you always get your money worth, money's worth there for sure. So um, the thing I had was I was going to uh, tell everybody that I had been visiting with Bobby Reed and, and Bill Martin about the inmate program. And um, Bill is checking now with uh, the county's attorney and with his own personal attorney. They have to make sure they're all good to go as far as liability, um, who would, who would assume the liability? Um, and things like that. That's what they're telling me. It's, you know, and I can imagine if we have some inmates that decide to take off on us or hurt someone or operate a piece of equipment and run over somebody, somebody's got to be liable for it. So they're checking, dotting all their i's and crossing all their t's, but they said within a week they'll have their answers back to me as how that program works. And basically what I told them was I just want a checklist of, you know, what it's going to take. You know, you have to provide supervision and, and so on and so forth. You know, you provide lunch. There's no compensation is, is the way I understand it now, which is great, but I thought maybe we could even take some of our retired um, police officers and it might be a good way for them to earn some part-time money. Uh, you know, I was thinking like the buzz hops out there that always put in part-time anyway in the bucket truck. If he wanted to, I'm just using him as an example, but say, hey, I'll go out and set on the, the UTV and make sure they don't take off on us and watch them put bricks. But I think that would be a great way to start getting some extra help to repair brick, brick streets and do some of the odd jobs in the summer from weed eating to, you know, they're helping other communities. So there's no reason we shouldn't take them and help us too. And it might actually be a good incentive program. Um, you know, Brad and I spoke a little bit about that earlier. If somebody was to be able to help the city of Fort Scott through this program, we have a job offer for them after they were released. Um, I think that'd be great because if they're, if they're great workers and they come out and they work hard, we say, hey man, we're going to give you a second chance here and we'll get you through all the testing and, and get you to be a, a part-time or full-time employee. So I think that could be something to be really good for the city of Fort Scott. That's all I have.
Um, I have a few things. Diane, I didn't know if I could ask you like, when we bring stuff up in commissioners' time, if you can, for me at least, put it on the next agenda under my comments also to refresh my memory. Um, because sometimes I'll ask something and I'll forget and then two months later I'll remember it. So if you could, um, so a few things I have, make it real quick. Lake Valve, where are we at on fixing that one and getting a second one? Um, and you can just update me next meeting. So that way same time. Um, Memorial Hall steps repairment was a contractor there. Yeah, so he probably needs a total redone, but he thinks that we can redesign it for a handicap ramp and maybe go after some grants that way. So if we could look at that. Um, one thing I want to look at is updating city managers' authority on giving bumps on car allowance and. So if we could look at that, um, one thing I want to look at is updating city manager's authority on giving bumps on car allowance and vacation.
Upping it?
Yeah, in the past.
Updating it?
Up, in the past, certain city managers have, um, there's salary ordinances for salary, but there's really no authority. I guess a city manager can just give someone more car allowance without commissioner's approval. It's happened in the past or maybe extra vacation. So I'd just like to look at that or preload in vacation or something. If they can just update me that. Um. Okay. So if we could look at.
Yeah, we probably need to create one.
Create a policy for that. Um. A few staff members, I know, now Buck Run, we've talked about this before, the, our system for the pool, Buck Run and the golf course is terrible. And I think the pool is just doing away with it next year. And so if we can look at a way, okay, perfect. Um.
POS.
Um, that's about it. I did have someone reach out to me that paints some graffiti at the skate park and picks up trash. And they want to know if they do a couple murals down there. So if I could.
Murals? Yes. Are you, I'm, uh, I'd like to report there's a new process. Anybody would like to paint a mural, they need to fill out an application here at city hall.
Perfect. Can we email that to people as well?
Of course.
Okay.
Then it gets approved by the city manager. If you want it brought to the city commission, I can do that. But I mean, I don't, if there are any criteria, if you'd like to have a work session to come up with a criteria.
Well, I, I mean, the only objective I had was the, in, in, I mean, was the, the, the wings at, at the.
Gun park?
Yes, there were some people that felt that that was offensive to their religious beliefs. And so I, I don't know if, if the city manager wants to handle that alone or consider that or.
Whatever you, whatever you folks want.
Design review. I, I don't want to become too cumbersome. I want people to be able to do.
So design review would have to review, review anything in the historic district?
But not around the rest of the community. So could that become part of the responsibility? I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, I'm talking out, I'm thinking out loud here how to do this. And so.
Well, I mean, I guess you can bring it to us. I mean, you, you bring road closers to us and that seems more minor than, and that seems less minor than a mural. So.
Okay.
So you might, you might try to work on a set of criteria that would need judgment, like is this going to be religiously offensive to somebody or politically offensive to somebody or?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it will include that.
And I know, I know even before they were doing that before, even with their wings and everything. So.
So, uh, going forward, we will bring those to the next commission meeting, any of those applications that are submitted for your review.
Sounds good to me. It does everybody else.
Okay. All right. And that's all I got. And then I think we have a couple of executive sessions. Oh yeah, I forgot last week we talked about that. You're right. Travis, he spent a lot on it, but I haven't told Kevin how much he spent on it yet. So.
Come on Travis, tell us what's going on and has he found any drugs yet? Is it a vape dog?
Oh, so I, uh, so I have my K nine handler and then Jason Ficker, our caller, I picked vendors for dogs. And I said, Donald, maybe I'll let you talk to vendors, go and talk to, uh, some police departments and where they go. And I said, get a whole list of people, lady, and you got a little length of rope and it says, hey, we've got a young dog.
Microphones, no.
We've, we've got a young dog that, uh, uh, we've already got it to credit with our vendor. It's really no sense taking it back, but we've been wondering what to do with it. We would donate it to you guys. He's a two-year-old that, uh, has gone through the highway patrol. He's, we're working him, but we really don't, you know, we don't have room for him. We're out refilling the position. So we went up and got this dog. On the way back, the, the trainer that we were going to go to was in Pomona. He says, yeah, he says, looks good. So we've got our guy in, uh, in training with our dog. Um, the dog's already trained. We're training the guy. And, uh, he says, you guys got to steal on this. This is a really, really good deal. So, so, uh, his name is Phoenix. And, um, Phoenix is, is, uh, I babysat him that first weekend because he's, my K nine guy got married. So I had him in my house and he's just, he's just, uh, yeah, he's something else. So we're, we're really pleased.
Good. That's karma. That's good karma. Give something away and got something. I believe in karma.
Yeah. All right. I, uh, the first one, I moved the city commission recesses into executive session for the purpose of financial affairs in pursuant to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations. KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen before the meeting will include the commissioners, the city manager. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Um, the open meeting, well, how long do we need?
Ten minutes.
The open meeting will resume at nine ten in the city commission room. So we're going back.
Yes, please come back to the. Kevin Allen?
Yes.
Peter? Randy?
Yep.
Yes. Yes.
Pete Allen?
Yes.
Randy Nichols? Josh Jones?
Yes. I, um, make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second.
Kevin Allen?
Yes.
Pete Allen? Randy Nichols? Josh Jones?
Yes.
Three hours.